Hi, I'm Pat Thatcher.
And I'm Margaret Gifford, and we're from Sotheby's International Realty.
And you know, Margaret, I think the word that best describes this real estate market this year is opportunistic.
I think that's a great word to describe what the real estate market's doing now.
I think it is also, and that says, if you're a seller, my golly, get your house ready correctly.
And if you're a buyer, do your homework.
So if you want to be part of this opportunistic real estate market, jump on that horse.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganech Communications. Meganech offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganech.net.
Hello, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, October 29, 2018 Selectments Meeting. We are going straight from open session into executive session under generalized Chapter 38, Section 21A6, with respect to a status update on a potential purchase of Liberty Green project site. And as Chair, I state that to not go into executive session may prejudice the town in this negotiation and subject.
Return to...
Oh, and we will return to open session right thereafter. Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Brown, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Moran, aye.
Jones, aye.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we need to meet in this room because the normal room we've gone to executive session is...
Is from voting.
Is early voting, and there's a committee in the other room.
Folks, I hate to disturb you, but we're gonna have to meet in this room, so please come back at 7:00. Welcome, everyone, to the Monday, October 29, 2018 Selectments Meeting. We have just returned from executive session, and we will now have a pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No proclamations. Okay, no proclamations tonight. Next, we will have recognition. Ms. Braga.
Just wanted to have a moment of reflection, just thinking about the events that took place in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. I know a lot of folks from town are at the green right now, holding a candlelight vigil in memory of the 11 individuals who were killed at the synagogue, and so just, we're not able to join them, but we want to join in that community gathering to show support for folks here in our community. And just to note that, you know, when that took place, you know, the police department in town immediately went to the Jewish congregation to have security there and to support that community, and that was really appreciated, I know, by Rabbi Lieberman, who commented on it publicly. And of course, we show our appreciation to the police department for recognizing what's needed in times like that. So just a moment of silence, please.
Thank you. I do want to make a quick announcement. We are planning a follow-up to the Route 28 meeting that we recently had at the library. It's gonna be Monday, likely at 5:00. The venue is still to be announced, but please to look to that. I'm sure it'll be on the town website, as well as in the newspaper when that's finally determined.
We have confirmed that the high school is available, so as long as the board is comfortable with that, we're green light.
And it's Monday, November 5th.
Correct. Monday, November 5th, it'll be at 5:00.
5:00 PM.
5:00 PM, and we will hold the Board of Selectments meeting there as well. So look for that. Yes, Sam?
Yes, I want to just remind everybody that early voting is available, if that turns out to be the best way for you to vote. It's going on right now at Town Hall, so you can come in to, I think, Monday nights it's open until 8:00, but the rest of the week...
Tuesday, Tuesday I think is 8:00, and the rest of the night's 4:30, I think.
4:30 is the end, so take advantage of it if it works for you and allows you to vote.
Great. Any other announcements? I think so. Okay. Next, we have a public comment. It's an opportunity for anyone in the audience who wants to speak on an item that is not part of the agenda. There is a two-minute maximum time for that. Is there anyone who would like to? Jack, please.
Thank you. My name is Jack Affarian. I'm the race director for the Cape Cod Marathon. We held our event this past weekend with a little bit of weather on Saturday in our half marathon, and then we were blessed with some good weather on Sunday. One thing that happened Saturday, late Saturday afternoon, our tent blew away at St. Barnabas Church, which caused us a little bit of a problem, but Reverend Will at the church was kind enough to let us use their parish house. Early Sunday morning, we had to scramble a bit for registrations that would have taken place under the tent. Excuse me, Sunday morning, the tent was put back up while we were in the parish house. Unfortunately, it took a lot of our resources to scramble and cover for that. There were a few issues that we did have Sunday morning that were partly the result of us scrambling around with the tent, and we impacted the church a bit. And we know what they are. I've talked with Chief Dunn about them. I'm gonna have a meeting with him later this week to go over any other issues that we have. And if you would like to know what we're planning on doing about those issues, I can send you all a letter in a few days if you would like that to follow up. I mean, I just want to thank you for your support with that event. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you. Well, it's not a...
Oh, we don't...
Right. Thanks, Jack. Mark.
Mark Fenner in Precinct 6. First, I'd like to congratulate the people that showed up at the library and had their voices heard on the plans for our Main Street and T-Ticket Highway. And I'd also like to point out that there were dozens of people who could not even enter the building and could be seen driving away, as Representative Vieira pointed out. And it's great that we're gonna have another shot at this, so to speak, but I'd just like to comment that having that thing at 5:00 in the afternoon limits almost anybody who has a job or children from attending. And overall, both of these meetings, well, you'll successfully have left some of the public out of the comment. Thanks.
Anyone else? Please. Pardon? Oh, Cape Light Compact's on the agenda.
I know, but it's not about this.
Okay.
It's about the future. I'm talking about the present.
So, the presentation, I think we'll just ask for that to be the presentation. I like to be strict about the rule because when it comes up, it's oftentimes people want to add things. So I apologize. Let's just wait. It was pointed out, it's on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think so. Okay.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. Next, we have, under administrative orders, a vote of whether to accept the fiscal year 2018 Bulletproof Fest Partnership Program Award in the amount of $10,255.36.
I move that we accept this award.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next, we have whether to vote to authorize payment from the Recreation Department donation account in the amount of $3,955.93 to Anthem Sports LLC for the purchase of volleyball net system.
I move approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have whether to vote to accept the water main extension agreement in Eastman for Nice Park Professional Officers Trust, County Road, North Falmouth. Mr. Suso, would you tee this up for us, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is a proposal that was presented to the Water Department to extend water use to this particular subdivision, and the proposal was developed in consultation with Town Council and is recommended for the board's favorable consideration.
Any questions for members of the board? I move approval. If there are no questions?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have whether to affirm a change in the Commission on Disabilities CPC application for placement of "all people's playground" at Emerald House site. Kathleen? Oh, great. Can Peter be right with you to plug that in? Does that mic move so we can see her?
Yeah.
Now, we're gonna have to give a different...
Concerned about the mic. We can bend the mic down, let her stand.
This is a... Maybe if she doesn't mind coming on this side.
This side, right. That's what I think.
Except then, folks at home can hear. You'll pick it up right there.
Madam Chair, if I just might make a couple introductory comments.
Yes, please.
The board will recall that Disability Chair Kathleen Haynes had come to the board a few weeks ago, asking for your consideration to authorize an application for CPC funding for an all-people's playground. At that time, the proposal that was brought forward was for the potential location of such playground at the existing senior center site on that property. Unfortunately, given the proliferation of wetlands there, we've determined that it's really not gonna allow us to go forward after that more thorough evaluation. And this request, we've discussed that further and reviewed some other alternatives with Ms. Haynes in the meantime, and this involves a suggestion to the board to consider allowing this to occur at an alternative site of Emerald House, which is an extensive property, and you have some maps on that. So that's just a little background, and we welcome Kathleen Haynes' further comments and description.
First of all, I don't know if you have... Do they have the maps?
We do.
Yes, yes.
Okay, because I was discharged from the hospital to do this, and I put the thing together and forgot to put the maps in the PowerPoint.
Amazing.
So I hope this goes over well. Okay, so I want to take on a little background on what we've been doing since July, when I came before you. Oops, the wrong way. Okay. First of all, we went to, we discussed the senior center property. I had the approval. That was through July and August. What we found was it was all wetland, so that had to be removed. Then where did we go? We had a choice between Trotting Park and Car Drive-In or the Augusta property. We discussed those. So this here is Trotting Park. That little area was the part that, unfortunately, I can't blow it up, but is behind the parking lot and next to the playing field. The problem was, is the infrastructure was there for the, has a road, but the parking lot has got many issues that the Rec. Department and the Rec. Committee is trying to iron out, but right now, it's not really accessible. You'd have to put in a hardtop, so that would be a cost, and it's close to athletic fields, so that's great. But the cons were the parking lot problems, no bathroom facilities, and the biggest one I had, it wasn't close to transportation. And I think that's one of the big things we want, is that it's accessible to everybody. And if people can get there by bus from Woods Hole or even the Mashpee people, the Mashpee Line, to get to Emerald House, which is right on Davisville Road and right at, almost at the corner of Route 28, that makes it a lot more sensible. So the Augusta parcel, which I know is the Car Drive-In, that was a big favorite, because this is part of the road that goes in. There's still flatland, is this scrub brush and scrub pine like that, but it's not, it's still got remnants of the Drive-In, so it's still fairly flat. There are trees that would have to come down. These are pictures that were done in 2012 that I found. So this is all remnants of it. This here is the parcel that we had figured out. Bob Shea had done the GIS for me. And to the bottom of the picture by the seal is the Clipper Ship Properties. And so it's close to that. And this here's a topology, and you can see it's fairly flat. There's just a corner in the left back that has a small hill that was workable. But the problem was, here's all the pros, which are all, to me, put it very much in favor. It's close to transportation, it's fairly flat, you know, what I've already said, it's a good shot. The Augustals were behind it, they would like to be represented, they were for it, mostly because it would get cleaned up. This was what the big cons were, is the Water Sewage Treatment Committee has...
Claim.
Claim on the property. If you don't call it a claim, to give another word. So we would have to meet with them, we'd have to put them on the spot and say, where are you planning on putting the treatment plan, if you put it there at all? Because of the Clipper Ship housing, technically, I guess, they couldn't put it in that area because it's too close to housing, and the sewage would be smelly and all, I guess it was, Bob was the one who told me, it was not allowable to be that close to housing and with lumber. So we couldn't put them on the spot and say, well, where are you gonna put your plant? Are you gonna go down Brick Hill Road, or are you gonna put it up in this area? So we felt we could not negotiate with them before November 1st, which is when I go before the CPC. So tonight is the last night I have to convince you, or not convince you. So then we went to the Emerald House property. Julian told me that it became available on October 1st, when the Service Center moved out, and it was available completely at that point. So, I don't know if you can read that. It's a little bit of history why we want to go to the Emerald House. I just feel because of the location and the fact that it's close to the different roads that intersect, there's plenty of parking, and I'll show you some of the slides I took that show how close to East Falmouth School it is. And it's right in the backyard. And when you go into the property, it's flat and there's grass. You go back, yes, obviously, it has to be cleaned out. But it has the advantage, it has the Emerald House, which could be used for bathrooms, or we truck in the trailer porta-potties, which is, they have trailers to have the handicap bathroom, and the regular bathroom in one trailer, as opposed to having the little houses. Those aren't very comfortable for a handicap person. We had thought that perhaps because there's a ramp going up, and then there's a ramp in the back that go in the door, it might be usable as a bathroom. It's use those bathrooms, and if it's rented out, work out an agreement to use that part of the building. If it was worked out that the play space are, I use the term park now, because it just is big, and we're talking about 1.5 acres at Emerald House, which would be next to a one-acre community garden, and behind that would be playing fields, which entrance would come off of the road where Dunkin' Donuts is. So we wouldn't be crossing over and using the parking spaces for playing fields that also would be used for the play space. It'd be plenty of parking. So this is just a little continuation of it, but I've just basically said what's on there, and it's just an all-around, you know, my big thought when I started this was T-Ticket Park. Then, you know, the senior center, it was a really good option, and then when it became Trotting Park or Car Drive-In, I really, really liked the Car Drive-In. But they don't make sense in the long run, and I think the Trotting Park property does at this point. It's right at the school, there's a walking track around the property at East Falmouth School, there's an accessible playground, it's not inclusive, but it is accessible, which, I don't know, at this point, I think you know which the difference is. And there's tennis courts down below, so you have a whole draw there, not just the Playstation, Playstation, I'm tired, the park, but the East Falmouth School itself has plenty of offerings for families. One of the things that, the 1.5 office, is it allows us, you know, well, this is going in, it allows us to have all the zones that we want. And one of the things I'll show at the end is some of the inclusive inter, excuse me, interactive equipment that we'd like to put in there to attract teens. And it would be family use, some of it's inclusive, some of it's not, but the inclusive parts are very, very excellent resources because they help even kids that are fairly non-responsive light up because of the action and the things that go on with the arch. So it's all pro at this point. So this is the parking lot from the East Falmouth side. So there's the ramp, there's a garage, and there's also another structure, which would be great to store things in, and also the community garden would be able to have one. So this is heading toward the fields. This is the trash barrel, but you can still see, there's parking there, too. And this is the grass part that is directly behind the trash barrel. So you have all this open, there's a little more open toward the left, and there's a clothesline, and then this more on the right, and then you can see where the tree line is. So this shows a little bit more going to the right. Oh, that must have been a double slide. Okay. So this is sort of the burn that goes between East Falmouth School and the Emerald Property. You can see the kids barely on the track over there, and barely see, but the tennis courts are back there. And more to the right of the burn is where packing is, and I'll show you here. This is packing as you look across. This is more packing on the side, and directly across is the packing that the school uses during the day. But there's enough parking that even during the day, on a school day, you'd have parking for families or individuals who want to use play space. I get used to the name park. But this is some of the interactive equipment. There's actually a phono, it's called the Yelp phono. It's a DJ booth that if you put your cellphone down, it makes the sounds DJs use, and it's actually indestructible. It's cement, it has benches that are screwed in and made of materials that they can't break. The middle is a football-type, well, they call it football, it's actually soccer. It's, this company's from Sweden. So, and the picture on the right is more of it in action. You can play soccer, you can play different sports on it. These here are, it shows the DJ booth with the arch. The one on the left is a, called a memo, and it can teach ABCs, it can take different learning, it's a tag game, memory game, and you race from tower to tower. They have light up, they light up, and you can crisscross. And the last one, I think it is, this is the activity with different sports, and you can play the street hockey, again, different, those different zones in the color block all help with different activities. So this is the arch that I was talking, it has a camera in the top, and it makes the center, depending which center you buy, do different things, so kids in wheelchairs can interact with their friends or family, and it's a super package. And it really surprised me, because without a deduction for buying all the pieces, it actually only comes to $88,000, which I don't think is a big number for all of that. And installation, adding, actually includes insurance on it and some of the installation costs. I added up all the different things with it, and it came to about $88,000, which, when we're talking about the play space, we're talking, the CPC grant is for $400,000 if we get that, or get any amount of that. We've already formed a Board of Directors, we still have a couple people to hear from. We gotta meet soon, because once we do, we can do the bylaws and then file the 501(c)(3), which gives us the opportunity to start fundraising. But we've been meeting fairly regularly lately, it's been every week, a planning team, so we're moving forward. We're not waiting on just the CPC grant. We're going with this and moving forward despite what the CPC grant holds.
What kind of staffing is it gonna require? For example, taking the equipment in and out, storing the equipment?
I don't know. I'm really, because the thing is, is this equipment just stays. There's no, there's no equipment to bring in and out for this equipment.
I thought I saw like, sort of like little hockey sticks?
If they, well, kids can bring their own, but I'm also thinking that if we want to get the activity tables, the pool cues, whatever, those would have to be stored at night, but I'm wondering if we can eventually trust kids enough to leave the shed unlocked and have one of those sheds with shelves on it to put it on. Hopefully, it would be patrolled. I don't know if we can trust the kids. I'm hoping that... I don't know if we can trust the kids, I'm hoping that eventually we can because the, on our main street, there's the chessboard. And those chess pieces have been here for a long time. I think pieces get lost, but I've seen the same box on top of the chess table for, I don't know how long. Every time I've been going up Main Street for years and people do respect it. I know it's a bigger deal um with the tables being permanent and I don't know if there's a way to build something underneath that they could be stored under, like the pool table or the table tennis like that. That's a possibility. I don't see having to have a staff person. Um, what we're hoping is that we make enough money um with the fundraising that we can contribute toward park cleanup so that the town doesn't have to take the whole cost of it. How much we'd make, 'cause anything that's left over in the 501(c)(3), we have to do something with. And if we continue to build on it and have money available, if we wanted to, if we could use, say, the bottom floor of the Emerald House by pinball machines and things like that to keep the park going during the bad weather. And that would keep the kids active. There's nothing in this town for kids um of a certain age. And if the kids can take, a kid of a certain age is able to take a bus by themselves, they can hop down and get on, go down there. You know, if somebody wanted to volunteer, we could put up a volunteer um position and have a volunteer at the center, whatever we call it. Because we've already talked about, it was this um senior center, if we use that um as a mini rec center.
And have you had a chance to roll this out for the rec committee? And if so, what has been their response?
We haven't rolled this out, we've met with them, they have um given us a letter of endorsement. Um, we've gotten a letter of endorsement from the T-Ticket PTO, North Falmouth PTO. The others have said they're giving it to us, but we even, what we've done with the planning team is we've invited the different PTOs. We have somebody from, uh, most part on the Pete, on the planning team. But we're trying to reach out to different groups. I talked to Spalding today, to the Children's Rehab Program. Um, somebody from them, as long as it's not during the holidays, will meet with us to make sure we, we do get the right handicap equipment so that any disability will be represented in our equipment. Um, I've reached out to the Special Ed Advisory Council um to have somebody from their board come to our meetings. But right now, they've been unresponsive. And I think, I think I actually reached out to the wrong person reading the newspaper. It's somebody else who's more active. But I'm trying to reach out to different organizations to get them represented because these people on these PTO, they're experts. I don't have kids.
Sure.
I'm, I'm young, I don't have the kids, so.
Okay, um, we do have a hearing, um, so we're gonna hold this for a little bit. We've got a seven thirty, we've got to move to, thank you very much. Great presentation so far, there'll be questions after.
Okay.
We're gonna move right to the seven thirty fee hearing with respect to the Police Department fingerprint processing fees. As provided under chapter 119 of the Code of Falmouth, a public hearing will be held in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall on Monday, October twenty-nine, two thousand eighteen, at seven thirty PM to establish and promulgate fees which are effective as of January one, two thousand nineteen, to be charged by town departments and agencies except as provided by General Law's School Department, Planning Board, Library, Town Clerk, Town Treasurer, and Collector of Taxes. Uh, the proposed changes in fees are listed below, oops, that's the, here we go. So, these are the specifics. Police Department, fingerprint processing fee. Manager of alcoholic beverage license, present fee zero, going to one hundred dollars. Uh, Hawker and Peddler, present fee twenty-five, going to one hundred dollars. Owner or operator of public convenience, presently twenty-five, going to one hundred dollars. Dealer of secondhand articles, presently twenty-five, going to one hundred. Ice cream truck vendor, presently zero, going to one hundred. And such further changes as proposed at the meeting. Publication date was Friday, October nineteen, two thousand eighteen, Falmouth Enterprise. Um, thank you all. I think we'll um, I'd like to start with uh recognizing some correspondence. Uh, Town Council, Frank Duffy, um, could you just start? I understand it was some correspondence that was received.
Well, yeah, so some correspondence we received today, which I just admitted. When I was here the last time, a couple of weeks ago, you asked two questions.
When I was here a couple of weeks ago, you asked a couple of questions and I did provide you with answers. Is there any further explanation of that that's might be necessary?
I think it'd be useful to have the.
Okay, the first, fine, fine.
Yep.
Um, the first question um was there was a presentation made by Attorney Richard Latimer in which he basically argued that the bylaw was unconstitutional and you asked me to take a look at it to see if I could make that determination. Um, the bylaw was adopted by town meeting in, in April of two thousand eighteen and is, is that the normal course in a town, we submitted the bylaw to the Attorney General for approval. The Attorney General has the right to approve all bylaws of towns. Um, during that process, the approval process, the Murphys did submit a letter to the Attorney General in which they urged her uh to disapprove the bylaw. Nevertheless, on July second, the town clerk received a letter from the Attorney General approving the bylaw. And the Attorney General made a couple of points, which I'd just like to call to your attention. One, the Attorney General noted that the bylaw is modeled after and specifically authorized by General Laws Chapter six, section one seventy-two B and a half. So, there is, this bylaw was not something that was created in the town of Falmouth. Uh, the Police Department elected to follow a state law which provides a pathway for this bylaw. The Attorney General also noted that the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security has issued procedures for local police departments to follow in implementing this bylaw. I have not seen them, but I'm assuming the Chief of Police and his officers have it and they will follow the procedures prescribed by the Executive Office of Public Safety. Now, the, the fact that a bylaw was approved by the Attorney General does not guarantee it is constitutional. Um, they, they do not have that authority. But it's certainly good evidence that it is constitutional because they have vetted the bylaw and they have compared it to the provisions of general laws that may apply uh and also general constitutional principles. But it is not a guarantee of consti- constitutionality, but as I would say to you, it is good evidence. In any event, um, the burden of proving that a bylaw is unconstitutional is upon the people who claim it is not constitutional because one of the, the tenants of statutory interpretation in Massachusetts courts is that a bylaw that is approved by a town meeting and approved by a Attorney General is presumed to be valid. Um, it's not, for me, I don't have the authority to say something is constitutional or unconstitutional. That's solely the province of a court.
Nor, nor do we have the power to.
Nor, nor do you, that's correct. The second question, which I uh took a look at, was raised in a letter that was given to you by Mrs. Murphy uh at the, or maybe that day anyways, at the hearing, in which she pointed out that under the provisions of General Laws, chapter forty-eight, section eleven, there are certain requirements for a public hearing which were not observed. I've looked at that statute, I've determined that it applies to hearings held by the Board of Appeals under the local zoning bylaw and not to a fee hearing on the chapter one nineteen of the Code of Falmouth. There is another point um that Mrs. Murphy raised in a letter which was delivered today. Um, one of the points she raised in there is that there should not be a uh, an action by the board with respect to the fee for door-to-door solicitors. And I think in that respect, she is correct. Uh, the bylaw that was passed by town meeting did not refer to door-to-door solicitors. Somehow or other, it got on your papers, but you shouldn't act upon it. So, that's my report.
All right, thank you, so we'll exclude that. Um, next, I'll ask the Chief, take him up, please. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair, the board. Uh, with your permission, uh, I'm gonna have, um, we have a, one PowerPoint slide and I'm gonna have Lieutenant DeCosta speak on behalf of what the Police Department's intentions are. What the Police Department's intentions are as far as those fees, if that's okay with you.
Thank you. Welcome, Lieutenant.
Thank you. Good evening, Lieutenant Douglas DeCosta with the Police Department. So, as uh, the town attorney stated, the bylaw's in place. And part of the bylaw, just to give you a, a quick premise on this, had to, had to have a starting point of a fee. So, one hundred dollars was chosen. So, as we went over the fees, we wanted to make recommendations to the board so they could consider this. So, as you look at this, the first one, secondhand dealers, the original fee that we've been using is twenty-five dollars. And we still need the thirty-dollar fee for the fingerprinting and that goes to the Commonwealth. So, fifty-five would be a, a minimum recommendation. And that goes right down the line, so taxi, limousine operators licenses, twenty-five plus thirty, fifty-five. The ice cream truck vendor, we were using a fee of twenty, so plus thirty to fifty. And then the Hawker Peddler will leave the solicitor off, as, as was noted earlier. And that's uh twenty-five, thirty, and fifty-five. So, those are the, the recommendations we're going with only 'cause we've started off with the original fee and we're just adding the state fee that's required for us to go forward with the background checks. Uh, just to note, the, there's uh several of the Cape Towns there listed, Barnstable, Brewster, Dennis, Harwich, Nantucket, and Yarmouth, they're using the same procedures. The fees vary from twenty-five to a hundred, so there, there is a range, a scope that you can look at. And then finally, our last recommendation was, this, within the fee structure right now, our, our, uh, the town of Falmouth's fee structure, it has several public records fees. The state has taken that over, it's all in mass general law, so we, I, I would recommend that you really don't have it in there 'cause it's already in the general law. So, that's our recommendations for tonight.
Would that one be under our other few hearing, though not this? The public records request would be changed during our seven forty-five hearing, I think, not this part of this hearing.
Right, but that's good information for us.
Thank you.
Sam?
Can I get a clarification? You have ice, ice cream truck vendor. There are other types of vendors. Now, I'm hearing food truck vendor, shouldn't this be broadened out? Is there a reason to keep it focused?
Ice cream truck vendor is a specific mass general law.
It is, okay.
Right, matter of fact, it's not even covered by our bylaw. It requires us to do a background check with fingerprints at the, at this time.
Well, there's, there's this semantic issue that I have 'cause in the Health Department fees, they have a mobile prepackaged novelties category. And I'm wondering, is that the same thing? Can we make this a little bit more user-friendly?
I bet, well, it sounds like it has to be looked at.
Okay, anyway, that's not for you to decide, I mean, but I just wanted to point it out, there's some inconsistencies.
Any other questions?
So, the hundred dollar fee now is gonna be fifty-five.
Well, the, that's up to you, sir. The hundred dollar fee is in the bylaw, just as a starting point. We're just giving our recommendations based on what the original fee was and then plus the thirty-dollar fee that we'll need to do the fingerprinting.
So, essentially, it's a difference between what the cost versus what would come to the town for the process and all of that. So, this is just what's, you know, the, just thirty bucks right off the top goes to the state. That's just what this outlines.
Yeah, as, as Lieutenant said, back when the bylaw, we didn't reinvent the wheel. We looked at other towns and that's what we submitted. And with, talking to Town Council, there had to be a fee in there. If, as you can see, we've got twenty-dollar fees, twenty-five-dollar fees and all that, it would've been um quite clouded and um people wouldn't have understood what was what. We knew we had to come in front of the board to have the fees approved. So, the number one hundred was chosen for when we went forward with that. And we explained that at town meeting, that it probably wouldn't stay unless the board elects to keep it at a hundred. That's up to you, you have the final say on the fee. But we had to start somewhere. And as we looked at our fees, as you can see, those are the current fees, the original fees that we charge. But moving forward, we need to have that thirty-dollar fee incorporated in there 'cause that's what the state is gonna be looking for.
Okay.
One minor one on the ice truck, ice cream truck vendor being different than the others. For just ease, would it make sense to make them all fifty-five? Or was the reason why ice cream truck vendor was twenty?
Number out of the, that's all, it's whatever you, whatever you elect to do.
You just used all the original, for whatever reason, that one was just at twenty versus the other one at twenty-five.
Correct, right. Whenever we came before the board, it just, that's where it was, so.
But consistency is a good point.
I would agree with that.
Are there any other questions from the board?
I guess, I have a question, then, are we gonna just uh come up with a fee of our own? Whether it's the fifty-five or the hundred or somewhere in between?
That's an option.
Yeah, we're gonna set the fee. This is, the hundred was the placeholder. But these are what they're proposing as recommendations, but, but then we can set it as to whatever we feel is appropriate.
Uh, Town Manager, do you have a comment?
Uh, only Madam Chair, that I appreciate the uh, the additional background work that the Police Department has done to give you some information on what some surrounding communities are doing. And that it is uh, whatever amount you set, this new fee between the fifty, fifty-five dollars and a hundred would be totally up to the discretion of the board as long as we set that uh minimum fee so that at least the minimum costs are covered. And we certainly recommend that.
Okay, I'll take some comments from members of the public.
Do you want, do you want us to establish what the fee is first?
I, I'd like to hear the comments first. Mr. Latimer?
Thank you, my name is Richard Latimer. I am a town meeting member, a citizen of the town of Falmouth. I've been here since nineteen fifty-eight, graduated from Lawrence High School. I guess you could say this is my hometown. And it really pains me to see this kind of arbitrary legislation being enacted by the town meeting of which I am a member. This bylaw is unnecessary, overbroad, unduly burdensome on the rights of honest, law-abiding individuals who happen to operate small businesses and their employees. And it is not rationally related to any real documented governmental interest of the town of Falmouth. For that reason, I say it is unconstitutional. This is not about the state statute. The state statute is permissive, it is not mandatory. We do not have to enact a bylaw like this in the town of Falmouth. And we must not enact a bylaw like this in the town of Falmouth unless it is shown there is a real need for it. It is the Chief's burden to prove that there is a real problem and he has failed to do that.
Really, not only talking about the number though tonight, I think as you stated at the beginning, you're arguing with town meeting?
Well, unfortunately.
What if we could talk more about the fee?
Excuse me, may I finish my few minutes 'cause I have to go? I'm gonna make a statement and leave.
Sure.
I'm not here to debate, I'm just here simply to say that this is, the challenge to this bylaw is the Chief has utterly failed to prove any documented statistics or anything else that there is a need for this bylaw in any of these contexts in the town of Falmouth. It may well be that this is a legitimate bylaw for cities like Brockton or even the towns like Hyannis. But we don't see it here in Falmouth. If there was such a need, then it should be specifically targeted to the areas where there is a documented need. This has not been done. You might as well say that the Chief can go out and take fingerprints from anybody on the street and, and require them to pay a hundred dollars in terms of the needs that's been shown in this town, not other towns in the state, but this town. And for that reason, I say that this is an overly broad, unnecessary, and burdensome licensing requirement that is not related to any rational and real documented governmental interest of this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Murphy?
And I do wanna uh recognize our appreciation, we are gonna exclude the door-to-door solicitors. So, thank you for that. And so, if your comments would be focused otherwise, that would be great.
Thank you, Madam Chair, my comments are focused on the fee. My name is Carol Murphy, I'm a Falmouth Town Meeting member. I am also the wife of a secondhand dealer regarding this fingerprint bylaw fee. March twenty-eighteen, there was a hearing by the Falmouth Board of Selectmen of Articles to be presented for spring town meeting. When Article twenty-seven came, Chair Susan Moran said, "I'll take that one." This is the current fingerprint bylaw. On April tenth, twenty eighteen, Falmouth Board of Selectmen and Town Manager Julian Susso presented to Falmouth Town Meeting an illegally crafted warrant article, then number twenty-seven, that was voted in as a bylaw at eleven fifteen PM. Over sixty town meeting members were missing at the eleventh hour vote. This fee, the fee of this now bylaw, was allowed by the above body to be set by petitioner, Police Chief Edward Dunn. Under chapter one nineteen-one, one nineteen-two, and one nineteen-three, a petitioner, any petitioner, cannot set a fee in an article and subsequent bylaw. The reason we're here discussing this fee is because this is a backdoor action to cover the illegal action at town meeting where Chair Moran, also an attorney, illegally and with forethought, shut down a. with forethought, shut down an argument against Article 27, shut it down, stating to the town meeting member incorrectly, "No, Chief Dunn can set the fee." Unfortunately, she was 100% incorrect, both as a selectman and as a lawyer. Furthermore, the category solicitors, e.g., door-to-door sales, cannot be added in after town meeting to the fingerprint bylaw. According to Nicole Caprioli at the Attorney General's Municipal Unit in Worcester, you, the Board of Selectmen, are mixing apples and oranges here, and the bylaw must go back to town meeting and approval by the Attorney General's Municipal Unit to add another category and amend this bylaw. See Friday, July 13th, issue of the Falmouth Enterprise, where the bylaw was printed without solicitors or door-to-door, and approved by her office. Chair Moran never read Chapter 119.1, 119.2, and 119.3, which Secondhand Dealers Association pointed out to her multiple times in print. These notices were also given to Town Council Duffy and Town Manager Susso. This fee and bylaw adversely affects the majority of 123 small businesses targeted. License holders are forced, before their licenses are renewed, to come to the Falmouth Police Station every year and submit to a full set of fingerprints and pay a $100 fee, of which 70 goes to the Police Department. Chief Edward Dunn and the Falmouth Board of Selectmen are anti-small business by bringing about a bylaw and large fee creating a burden to many of the small businesses targeted. Businesses like the St. Vincent de Paul Poor Society Thrift Shop and the North Falmouth Congregational Church Thrift Shop should not be forced to drive to the Falmouth Police Station, submit to a full set of fingerprints, and pay an annual $100 fee. This is humiliating and insulting to those religious volunteers. Then there are those who are managers of those small businesses who already have their fingerprints, FBI fingerprints, on file via military service or firearms ID card. I asked at April Town Meeting if this would apply to those business managers, and the answer came back, yes. Why? No credible reasonable answer has been given by Chief Dunn to date. Does one's fingerprints change over the course of one's life? Science says they do not. This fee should not be applied to those who have them already on file with the FBI, as stated above. This is an insult and superfluous to military veterans. To drivers from AA Taxi, ask, "Why is this an annual fee rather than a one-time fee? Are the police going to lose your fingerprints?" The obvious answer is, it's not a safety issue, it's a money grab, as Article on the cover of Friday, 10/19, Cape Cod Times states. Furthermore, liquor license holders are already subject to approval by Massachusetts State Alcohol Beverage Control Commission, or the ABCC. After completing a 10-page application for a liquor license, they're Corey-checked and subject to approval to the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission review, as well as the LLA, Local Licensing Authority, i.e. the Falmouth Board of Selectmen. They're governed by the rules of the ABCC. Fingerprint here again is excessive and unnecessary. Chief Dunn and Lieutenant DeCosta say this bylaw is another layer of protection for adults and children in Falmouth. Protection against what? Against whom? For the what and whom has never been stated. There are no documented illegal incidents involving these five categories of Corey-checked business entities. Nothing but a repeal of this illegally crafted and executed bylaw is acceptable tonight. Sadly, it again appears that the Falmouth Board of Selectmen and Town Manager Susso prefer litigation, i.e. the wind turbines in the Falmouth High School remodel lawsuits, than actually gathering folks from the above businesses to openly discuss an invasive and excessive law before their 11th hour launch for the money grab that occurred at April's town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, a couple of questions, or Lieutenant DeCosta, whoever makes sense. Explain the process a little bit. Are fingerprints, in fact, taken every time that, on an annual basis, or is there some, can you give us some of the nuts and bolts?
Once the fingerprints are taken once, much like with the license to carry, we would keep them, but the fee goes to the state. It's not us charging the folks. Each time, we request the state to look through the AFIS system for their fingerprints to see if an additional crime has been committed in the past year, we have to pay the $30 fee. It's the same thing with the license to carry. Each time, we take the fingerprints once, and then each time, we ask that the state review them again.
So in fact, there are no multiple taking of fingerprints?
No. In the, many people believe the fingerprints are in there. I am a veteran. My fingerprints are not in there. The way AFIS works is, they check it. In items like licensing, it's a little different, where they do keep the fingerprints on file.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I have a question, just following up on that. So if I had a secondhand shop, and I came in, you took my fingerprints, I paid the, whatever the fee ends up being, but $30 of that goes to the state. Am I paying that $30 separately each year?
Correct.
Okay. And then, well, whatever the fee is, I'm paying that each year?
Fee plus the 30. The key with the 30 is, that's going to the state to ask them to recheck the fingerprints through the AFIS system, to see if a crime has come up during that past year.
Doug?
I guess it was the exact same thing. The idea is that it is not a processing the fingerprints, it's not taking the fingerprints that the charge is about. It's filing into the computer database system is where the fee originates.
Yes, sir.
And sorry, one other, I'm sorry, one other question. And so I just want to clarify that it's not everyone who's going to work at any facility, it's not, so if we're talking about a religious thrift shop, or a church-affiliated thrift shop, it's not every single person who works there has to come and have their fingerprints taken, correct?
Correct, one person.
One person, right, okay.
Doug, did you have a question? Good clarification.
I think I understand it.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you. If you could just hold in case there are any more questions. Sir, did you have a question or a comment? Please come up.
Francis Murphy.
Francis Murphy, the head of the Secondhand Dealers Association, and we're now in the process of adding all the liquor license holders to that setup, which has been around for six and a half years. But I just wanted to note, to state that the approval of the Attorney General was required when bylaws were adopted, or in this case amended, and it's supposed to go back to town meeting if you're going to amend them. And then, secondly, I'd just like to point out, I believe Mr. DeCosta is in charge of this PowerPoint display, I assume, right? Okay. First of all, secondhand dealer's license fee has been $35, not 25, for over two years. Okay? I don't have any of the other licenses, but I have no idea if those are correct or not, too, but the secondhand dealer's license has been $35 for two years. Okay? And at the town meeting, okay, the PowerPoint projection that Mr. DeCosta put up, he had the same thing up, except he had the fee, the $100 fee, posted as $30. And one PowerPoint projection that we had, that Carol, my wife was going to post, was cut down by the head of the selectmen, and Susan Moran saying, "Yes, the petitioner can set the fee." Well, that's wrong. The Attorney General and the law has been cited to you, Mr. Suso and everything, and you've got to go back to town meeting.
We're actually setting it now.
No, you don't set it afterwards, ma'am. You do it correctly at the beginning of the operation. I'm not going to argue with you. I'm just going to make a statement.
All right, fine. Thank you.
Okay? The answer is-
Anyone else?
We've got to go to court on this. That's the problem.
Anyone else?
Could we just have a clarification from Frank for a moment?
Sure.
Frank, could you just speak to the issue that it's not the board's purview, correct? We can't repeal a bylaw in and of our own, a bylaw that's been voted on by town meeting. Does this board have the ability to repeal that bylaw?
Mr. Murphy made a comment that there was an amendment to the bylaw. I don't think there was an amendment to the bylaw. I think it was a clerical error is what happened. The bylaw did not include solicitors.
Right, and we've taken that out.
But it somehow ran a gut on your agenda, but it doesn't belong there, and you're not supposed to act upon it, and that does not require Attorney General approval.
Right, and we're only setting the fee tonight. The fee was not set at town meeting.
Well, the fee was set in the bylaw at $100, subject to revision by the Board of Selectmen under Chapter 119, which is happening tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question? Doug?
I guess I just wanted to be very clear about that, is that the bylaw was passed by town meeting, was put in place by town meeting, approved by Attorney General. We have no authority to change the bylaw. What we do have the authority to do is to set what the fee is, and that is our jurisdiction, our responsibility to set whatever fee we deem appropriate. A fee had to be put into a bylaw passed if there's going to be a fee. Something has to be put in there.
Right.
But it is up to us to choose what that fee is.
It's a placeholder, right.
And I would move that we set the fee for the, for all of these, secondhand dealers, taxi limo operators license, ice cream truck vendor, Hawker and Peddler, and the manager of alcoholic beverage licenses, at $60.
Second.
Madam Chair, do you need to close the hearing first?
I do.
Yeah.
I do. We'll just hold that for a second. Is there anyone else who wants to speak on this matter? Any other questions from the board?
No, move to close the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll take your motion now.
I just wanted the motion sort of on the table before the hearing is even closed, if you know what.
Sure.
That's where I was going to go with.
Yeah.
And so I would make the motion that the fee be set at $60 for secondhand dealers, taxi limo operators license, ice cream truck vendors, hawkers and peddlers, and managers of alcoholic beverage licenses.
Okay, so there's a second. Is there discussion on that, in terms of whether that covers the administrative costs? Is that a sufficient number?
I think it should do for now.
Obviously, that makes it 30 bucks, all across even.
Yep.
In addition to the state fee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Next, we have a 7:45, which is continuation of the fee hearing on the 2019 Town Department fees. Anybody have that hearing notice? Thank you.
All I did was take your things.
I know, that's why Doug's much more helpful. Okay, so I'm going to read the hearing notice. As provided under Chapter 119 of the Code of Falmouth, a public hearing will be held in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall on Monday, October 15, 2018, at 7:45 PM, to establish and promulgate fees which are effective as of January 1, 2019, to be charged by town departments and agencies, except as provided by Mass. General Law, School Department, Planning Board, Library, Town Clerk, Town Treasurer, and Collector of Taxes. The proposed changes in fees were read at the last time. Do we have to read them again? Thank you very much.
Madam Chair?
Please.
We do have one change, or two changes, I should say, to the proposed fees, and those relate to the advertising fees for the wetlands dock permit and for the aquaculture permit. So the proposed fee for the wetlands dock, rather than 70, is, we are suggesting $50, and the proposed fee for the aquaculture advertising is $35.
And the 50 is an increase from 45 currently, and the 35 an increase from 25 currently?
That's correct, and it reflects recovering our costs for advertising those fees. It's a direct cost recovery, and those fees are actually below, slightly below what it costs.
Great. Any questions by any members of the board?
No, I think we had a good discussion over it last time.
Is there anyone here who wants to speak on this fee issue? In which case, I'll take a motion to vote.
Move approval?
Nope.
Just close the hearing, excuse me.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And now your motion.
I would move approval for the fee schedule as formally read out, with those two changes that Mr. Johnson Staub noted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. We're going to go back to the item of business 1D. Kathleen, are you still here?
She just stepped out.
Did she? Okay. Were there any more questions? Is she still available, Joe?
I believe so. I think she might have just bought a lease.
Okay, fine.
Do the lease firm?
I don't know. All right, so we'll move to the next item, which is the vote to approve the lease of Andrews Farm to Jeff Andrews. Mr. Johnson Staub?
Thank you. So we are seeking the Board of Selectmen's approval of a lease to award that lease to Jeff Andrews. As the board is aware, we did issue a competitive request for proposals, received two responses, and we had the town administrator, the town manager appointed a committee to evaluate those responses, and it was the recommendation of that committee that the most advantageous response was the one from Jeff Andrews. The Conservation Commission has approved the lease with an amendment, and that related to herbicide use, we would ask for your vote, subject to potential technical clarification on that herbicide issue, and happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Terrific. This is a long time coming, a lot of work went into it, much appreciation goes to everyone who was involved. Doug?
Just what was the primary factor that was the leading reason for the award?
Sure, right. So we, in drafting the RFP and in evaluating the responses, we were primarily driven by what we took as the directive of town meeting, which is that they want to see farming here long-term. We want it to be successful. So we didn't want to sort of over-regulate with preferences and ideal things that we'd like to see at the farm. We wanted to prioritize, create conditions that are going to lead to success, and select an operator that is most likely to succeed. So we looked at experience and the financials of the proposal.
And now, if I could, another one.
Please.
So the lease is a little bit onerous with a lot of restrictions on herbicides and other, you know, green type of farming, and how will that compliance be monitored?
So if I could, I would like to sort of characterize the balance that we sought in terms of the restrictions. We're not, you know, there was a debate about organic versus not organic, and we did not require organic, and a lot of people would prefer that, but again, we wanted to prioritize making sure that the farming is going to be viable. So there, you're absolutely right, there are restrictions, best management practices are required, and in terms of who's going to sort of oversee and regulate, it's going to be through an annual report to our office and the conservation, in terms of that's where the staff is, to regulate compliance with the conservation restriction. I should say, the 300 committee holds the conservation restriction, so they will actually be the other point of contact for oversight and compliance with that conservation restriction.
Okay.
Sam?
Yeah, is there any role for the Agricultural Commission relative to managing this farm?
So informally, there has been, and there will continue to be, and formally, when we have, you may recall, town meeting voted to change care and control from Conservation Commission to the Agricultural Commission. We were in the midst of getting the state to approve the conservation restriction when that town meeting vote took place, so we didn't want to disrupt that state approval process, wanted to let the dust settle, but soon, we should probably be talking about this board petitioning the legislature to enact that change of care and control, and at that point, the Agricultural Commission will formally have that role of oversight.
That makes sense.
And I have a second question, if I could. In looking through this, I mean, circumstances change, you know, whoever the person holds the lease, you know, may become ill or something like that. I didn't see any opportunity for terminating the lease short of the actual date that it expires. Is there any opportunity, you know, for either the tenant or for the town to actually terminate the lease, renegotiate it?
So the, you know, the town could only terminate for cause within the five-year term or the 15-year term, in terms of the farm operator. You know, we don't have, we don't have penalty clauses built in, so I'm not sure I have a, you know, a technical answer for you, but where there is no substantive rent being proposed, I think that, that potential exists for the farmer to walk away. And there is, you know, there's a security deposit, so that, you know, the property needs to be maintained, and we would have a security deposit to, you know, to address any, any costs or liabilities that are left behind, but other than that, there would be no penalty for early termination.
And I think just the Andrews family continued involvement kind of mitigates that risk. I mean, they're just, they're longstanding roots in the community, to use a pun. Megan? Well, also, I think, you know, if there's a, if there's a reason, like you're indicating, something like health.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, this is clearly a source of some income for Jeff Andrews, so, you know, if he's in a place where his income is being impacted, I'm guessing he's having some conversations with the town, because he does have requirements to do certain things under that contract. So, um, you know, I think we've had a good dialogue. This has been kind of an ongoing conversation for quite a while now, since the town sort of started to enter down this path. So I think your point, you know, your concerns are well taken, but I think the practicality of, of this being an income-producing piece, and then, at the same time, the other, the flip side of that is, I think bringing in the Agricultural Commission the way that we have from the beginning, and they were part of this vetting process with Karen being on part of that working group, I think that, you know, we'll have hopefully some support in place if something really unexpected happens, and they, there's, you know, someone else can step in to help fill that, that void.
Well, worst case, they could go into fault after thirty days of non-performance of their duties, and then...
Yeah. No, I'm, I'm looking for a graceful way. I mean, my, my dad farmed ninety-five acres until finally his age precluded him actually physically doing what was required. Well, the family owned the farm. He sold, they sold it, you know, as my father and stepmother at that point, but I'm looking for a graceful way for whoever holds this lease, because we want a smooth transition as the town. That's in our interest. So I was just looking for that opportunity in the lease.
And the five-year, the current lease is for five years with an extension of fifteen, but that fifteen number can change. When we renegotiate, we can determine how with extensions, or is it only fifteen years is the only number available?
We certainly cannot go beyond fifteen.
No, but could say it's only five, if that's what...
You know what? I'd have to, I'd have to run that by town council. I'm not sure. The way the, you know, the way the RFP and the lease was written, it was five years and then fifteen.
Yeah. So if it's an option, then it's fifteen.
But in other words, if, if somebody's, you know, I think the point that Sam's raising, if someone's kind of coming to the end of what they want to do at that five-year window, they're not renegotiating for the next fifteen, because I think they're understanding that next chunk is something longer, is what the, the town was looking for.
Right. Right. I, you know, I apologize. I'm not giving you a definitive technical answer, and I think the, you know, the, the practical answer, again, comes down to the rent. Normally, you know, if there's, if there's a lease that involves a financial expectation on the part of the landlord, then to break that lease before the end of the term, there's a liability to the tenant. That doesn't exist in this case. You know, there's only a dollar, it's a dollar lease.
Right.
Well, I would move approval of the lease of the Andrews Farm to Jeff Andrews and feel that the Andrews Farm family is gonna continue to be operating that farm.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations to Jeff Andrews. Uh, we're gonna go back. Kathleen, if you wouldn't mind coming up again, and if, um, Doug, would you mind just fixing that mug mic, brother? Appreciate it.
I got it.
Oh, Peter's quick on the draw. Super.
So we're going back to whether we affirm the change in Commission on Disabilities CPC application for placement of all people's playground at the Emerald House site. Sam, did you have the first question?
Yeah, I had a question, and I think then we split at that time. Um, Kathleen, have you talked to the school department about this and talked to them about any issues that they might foresee in putting it next to the school grounds like this? And the reason I bring this...
I did not have a chance to.
Okay.
Um, I had talked to Laurie Door through emails, and she's very much in support of the playground.
But there's a difference here.
There is.
And the reason I bring this up is because I know that the Bike Waste Committee wanted to run a bike trail by the T-Ticket School, right? And there was quite a bit of objection to that. Uh, so I just want to make sure that we're covering all the bases here. I mean, I, I'm not against this project, but I, I'm, I don't want us to get so far down the road, and then all of a sudden, there's a, a reason why kind of butter would object to this facility being there. It is gonna draw in a lot of different kinds of public people, and I, and I, by the way, do not think this can go unsupervised. There's gotta be some level at some point, if you're gonna invite the public in general of different ages, not just, just different physical or, or mental capabilities.
I hope they're, if they're different ages, their families are there with them, unless they're a teenager. Um, we don't have supervision at any of the playgrounds. We don't have supervision at the playground at Goodwill Park. None of the schools have supervision at their playgrounds. Yes, this is bigger, it's more of a park, but if a family is going, it's up to the family parent. That's why the whole playground is based around an orientation path, so that the zones are within it, so that by definition, the parent should be able to see what their child is doing at any time. On multiple children, there'll be benches, there'll be, uh, breaks between the different play equipment, where there'll be benches. Um, it's not meant to be just one big, that's why it's one and a half acres, because it's broken up enough so that there's a central orientation area. Um, other adult activities will be more on the periphery, while the zones will have the younger children, like the two to four, two to, six to twenty-four month will be right near the two to five-year-old. A little removed from that would be the five to twelve-year-old. The teens would be a little off from that, so they're not quite in the children's area, but they're close, so the parents would see it. Where the adult fitness might be off to the side, so parents can still see their children. Seniors, we're talking about not just a fitness area, but something that they want to develop themselves for recreation. Um, I would see them more removed unless they have grandchildren. We have a lot of grandfamilies in this town. If they're invested in the play, then they're with their children, or grandchildren. I don't see that we need to pat- patrol a playground.
Megan, and then Doug?
I think the only way you'd have to have supervision would be if you're using, you know, some of those slides had like a lot of equipment, and you were talking about if we were providing some of the equipment for things like, like a street hockey game and things like that, then there may be some, not supervision while you're there, but maybe there's somebody who, at the end of a day, collects some of the, depend, again, it depends how far down the road we go of having all kinds of related
Right.
equipment. You know, there are models that don't require equipment beyond what someone brings for themselves, like a ball, or if they bring their own street hockey sticks and a ball. So, I mean, I think, um, Sam's point is well taken, that I think, you know, if we have all kinds of fairly valuable items there, some, you know, I don't think we're gonna leave them, leave them out, but I don't know that that's required by, um, you know, some of that equipment doesn't require all of that.
I think with the street hockey soccer balls, I think that can be on the kids to bring.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't think that we have to supply them.
Right.
Same with, if we do do the tables with the pool six, once the kids know that it's there, they can bring their own stuff. I mean, we might wanna do, try something in the beginning, but we let them eventually morph into doing their own.
So could you tell me a little more about the layout of the lot? And I see this one and a half acre playground, and there's two shapes of it to choose from, I guess. So that, I suppose, is what you showed us with the different slides?
No, 'cause I don't have, I didn't have the map in there, because I didn't have a chance to, and I forgot it.
Okay.
But I actually prefer, and this is my own preference, the L shape, only because of the parking, because we're dealing with seniors, and if the, that L shape up here, where the parking is closest in the Emerald Parking Lot itself, and right through the shrub, then the seniors don't have to walk around this part of the park.
Right.
That was my thinking on that. However, having the rectangle also allows for that to some degree, because they don't have to walk too far in, but also puts the orientation path more centralized, because the orientation path with the L shape would have to come in an angle around in an L, you know?
Madam Chair, could I just, may I just interject, if I might interrupt Ms. Haynes as well? Uh, two items I just wanted to note. The, the maps, the mapping that's brought to you, and some of which were shown on the screen, those were done for conceptual purposes, for the board, obviously, and as Ms. Haynes has indicated, you know, there's quite a bit of planning and, and detailed design that would need to be forthcoming, if the board does give the green light to take the next step. I also want to note that, um, we personally met with, um, uh, school facilities manager, Patrick Murphy, on-site, and talked about the general, the general overall concepts of what might be included on this property, and talked about the proximity to the school, and the potential for some sharing of existing parking and public infrastructure there. Um, and we were generally comfortable that it could be done in a, you know, productive way, and not a way that would be negative for either one, either entity. But that, that outreach to that extent has occurred as well.
Good to know.
So, so my question is, then, uh, the, the fifteen, I don't really understand this.
One point five acres.
You've got one point five acres of playground, you got a one acre community garden, and what is in the back this?
That's a recreation field. That's not, that's not, yeah, possibly. That's not going to go in immediately. That's in the future.
I see.
I mean, I think, again, I don't want, I don't want to get too wedded to those designs, 'cause I think there's lots, I know, I know you guys, guys are just sort of initially taking a look at a potential way to divide, to divide it up, um, and I know you'll come...
Just saying, it's, it's, it's on here, so it's up for debate, and, you know, I'm not saying it, it wouldn't be a great neighbor, but playgrounds can be noisy, and you got a lot of houses out behind that, so it's just something to consider. There should probably be some sort of buffer between the neighbors.
Well, if you go behind the Emerald property, um, enough to where this tree line is and where it'd be constructed, there really are no houses. They're across the street, and it'd be far enough in. I'm not saying we don't have to put a buffer there, because I think that's a realistic expectation by the neighbors, because we will have community forums. And I apologize for not going to the school committee yet, but since August, I've had multiple medical problems and have not had a chance to meet with Laurie other than by email, but...
I'm, I'm not really thinking of just the Davisville or the school. I'm saying the Green Harbor Road goes behind there. This lot goes all the way back to that road.
But we're not going that far.
Okay, well, that's my question.
Yeah, we're going back one eight, half acre, one and a half acres. The other part, which is way back to Green Harbor, is where the athletic fields would be.
Could potentially.
And they would potentially enter from that road.
Sam?
Yeah, well, one of my concerns with the location, this conceptual location, is that it's kind of concealed from the road and the, and the public. And I don't think that's a good, most of our playgrounds on the school lots and Goodwill Park, they're pretty out in public areas where people drive by on a regular basis. It's pretty, gonna be pretty easy for somebody that wanted to do vandalism or do something in terms of interpersonal activity, uh, to be behind the Emerald House and be concealed. I, I just think you need to take that into consideration. I only throw it out there as something that should be considered where we're citing a...
There is, there will also be a perimeter fence. There has to be a perimeter fence.
Megan?
So there can be two fences, one to go onto the property, and then one that can be locked, and one that surrounds the playground, or path, because there has to be a perimeter fence because of the different children disabilities.
Megan?
Just two points to that. Um, one, there isn't any park or playground that's more hidden than Trotting Park. I mean, you have to drive down a long road, and there's no one who's gonna see you, and that skate park is hidden. I know we've had some issues with vandalism in the past, but for the most part, those, those places are, are well-used, and they're, um, and, and they've been an asset to the town, so I, I think there are ways to sort of, um, address some of that. And the other piece is, you know, there's never gonna be, I think, an ideal place. We don't have lots of open space that's available like this. I think you've, you've, you've done a lot of work to try and vet what places could be available for this. Um, and as somebody who worked with, um, in the field of special needs for more than a decade, anybody who has a child, who has, or a family member, an adult, that's gonna want to use this, is, is gonna find a way to find this, because they're gonna, they're, they're, these type of playgrounds are so limited, that, you know, the promotion that we do as a town, the promotion that you guys do as a commission, is gonna make this something that people will seek out if they're looking for that, and then that builds. So, um, I think, you know, I know we're at the very beginning point of this. Uh, my position would be, I'd want to give the green light for them to go forward with the application.
So you're gonna do that motion?
I am. That's my motion, is to go forward, um, to affirm the change in your, your plan, so that you can go to the CPC with your application and do, and take a lot of the comments you've heard tonight to that next level.
I'll second that.
Uh, discussion, Doug?
I guess the only two points I'd make is, we still don't know what we're gonna do with Emerald House. It is a house that we need to figure out. It is a town-owned property that has value, and this may preclude some options we have for putting it there. The second point is, I think the Augusta Parcel is the right place, and if, the only reason we're not doing it is because we want to get done right now, as opposed to delaying a little bit. If that's the right place, I would rather take the time and go to the Water Quality Management Committee, get permission from them to say they're not gonna put the sewer treatment plant on that part of the site, because I think that, that does make so much more sense as a location for so many reasons that Kathleen pointed out in her slideshow.
Could I make a point to that?
Yes.
I have to go before the CPC on November first with a place to put the playground, or I lose the grant completely. That's what the rush is, is that, um, we're not change, we're not reapplying. We have applied. I have my interview for, that is the very last day that the CPC would allow. They have granted all this time for the purpose of coming up with a property. If I don't have a yes, or it's a no, I might as well not go on November first.
Megan?
Is there any way to get an answer? Um, I'm guessing not, but I'm just gonna ask. Is there any way to get an answer by Friday about the issue with the wastewater? Probably not.
So complicated.
Yeah.
Yeah, our understanding is, yeah, there's some great complexity there. The other, um, I think it was touched on briefly, um, by Kathleen. The other challenge with the existing site is there's no access drive and no parking area. So your infrastructure costs for putting a development of this type there, including if you decided you wanted to add restrooms, would, would all be additive to the costs to allow this con- concept of this playground to go forward.
I don't, but I don't really see parking at this site either. I, I mean, the parking at the schools, when the schools are in session, is not available. There is really not much parking behind Emerald House. If we're gonna use the Emerald House parking lot for this playground, this pla- park, we have then limited what Emerald House can be. Uh, the cost of turning Emerald House into an accessible toilet facilities would be almost as high as putting in a new one on the Augusta. I mean, it, that building is not well-suited to be usable bathrooms, and so I don't think, I think both those issues are problematic here also, and are gonna be costly. I would think you'd want to put in an access road to the playground and some additional parking, if you really were gonna use it at this site or at the Augusta Parcel. So I guess I didn't see that as being a, a huge cost difference.
Peter?
I don't want to weigh in on whether this is or isn't the right site, but I do just want to sort of clarify process. So Kathleen is bringing forward a, an all-people's playground proposal. The only reason that we generated a map that even shows an athletic field and a community garden is because this is a town parcel, and then certainly, there was, you know, discussion and interest in a community garden, and we have a master plan that says we need more athletic fields. So our thought here was just to say, you know, we wouldn't want the Board of Selectmen to say yes to this, and then, two years later, say, well, we would have liked to put an athletic field, but we can't, because we put a playground here. The purpose, so, so again, the purpose of this schematic was just to show, potentially, schematically, this may or may not, neither, you know, we've given you two layouts. I say we, Peter McConerty did the work.
There's room for all three.
There's, yeah, there's room for all, that, that was the only point. So, you know, of, the, tonight, the board's vote is whether or not it makes sense to put just the playground here and the community garden and athletic field. There's a lot more discussion and planning work that needs to happen, and if so, how best arranged. That's the point I wanted to make.
That's helpful.
Can I just make one last comment to Doug? Um, one of the things the planning committee has talked about, team, is that we may be having to come up with the money for those trailers I discussed. I have never been in the Emerald House, so I don't know the layout. It has been a thought, because it's a building that's right there. Um, but we have discussed having to raise enough money and keeping the contingency going, so that we would be able to sign a contract with the company, not only to place the trailers, we don't want porta-potties, that's, but the trailers, um, we would sign a contract to have them emptied a certain, over a certain amount of years. Um, what else did I want to address with you? I went there a couple times during school, and there was plenty of parking. The, the school parking lot is completely down there. There's complete parking all along here. The school parking lot was not full at the end where we were, um, and there were multiple parking spaces in Emerald House, but we don't guarantee they're gonna be there once things get going. And also, the whole premise of this lies on the designer. We will be hiring a designer to put all this in place. This is not something we're gonna pick pieces here and there and do ourselves. We will be hiring a designer who will do all the work.
I guess most of the time I've been there, parking has been during munchkin soccer, where there has not been parking available on a Saturday morning. It's packed, and I would worry that that would be the same time you'd want to be using the playground area. School day, maybe it's not as bad, but I'm sorry for interrupting.
No, fine. Megan?
No, I was just gonna say, obviously, you know, the parking, I think, is something that, that you'll, I mean, I think Doug's point is well-taken, that probably not during the school day, obviously not in the summer. That's gonna be not an issue, but there are those weekend days in the fall that are probably pretty tricky, although maybe somewhat limited when there'd be a big crunch, when all those parents...
I've never been there.
Yeah, so...
And I want to get the parking actually closer to the park than the school parking is, particularly if we're talking, making it accessible, to have it be a tenth mile walk or even twenty miles walk there. particularly if we're talking making accessible, to have it be a 10th mile walk or even 20 miles walk there. They're, they're not gonna go.
Yeah, I think there's gonna have to be some work done on this site.
Could always add some parking.
Right, yes, yep, yep.
So there's a motion in a second. Is there any more discussion?
Well, the only last point I would make is that it just seems like it would be a more natural amenity over at the Trotting Park fields and I think we need to fix the problems there anyway. And also, it would be a, a good investment to have restrooms there. I mean, the, the reasons that this isn't really viable there are reasons that should be fixed anyway.
Kathleen, did you wanna comment on that?
Yeah, the reason we put it out of contention is because there's no public transportation near there. That was the big reason, was it's just no public transportation.
And you need a whole parking lot. You absolutely have to have.
And that parking lot would have to be redone. It's good. It's not accessible. It's crazy down there. And that would cost, but the biggest reason was the lack of public transportation.
See, if you think the Kibcot RTA could be spoken about that.
Can you talk to anybody there, you know?
For a fixed route? I don't think so at this point, but I, I don't wanna speak for him.
So that was the consideration. Did you have another comment?
I do wanna thank Kathleen for all of her work. I mean, we need a facility like this in town. I, I think we're quibbling over this particular location, this concept. I think we would benefit from a designer coming in and looking at, at this parcel. Uh, and I, I would say that for some reason, this doesn't work out down the road. There's no reason that town meeting couldn't amend this article that will provide this grant, come up with an alternative. So I, I think, I, I don't have any qualms about saying, yeah, this is a good target site for the sake of the application this year, gets, getting some money set aside for it. But I do wanna say thank you for spearheading this.
Big thing. I'll take the vote now. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Thanks for doing all that in the midst of, all the health stuff you have on.
Uh, the next item on the agenda is whether to authorize an application for Mass Seaport Economic Council for grant funding support in the reconstruction of the Islant Dock and adjacent area in Woods Hole in collaboration with Woods Hole Oceanographic Institute. Come on up if you would. Welcome.
Thank you.
I'm Rob Munner, Vice President for Marine Facilities and Operations. I can give a presentation. I could give you a synopsis, or I can just answer questions because I know you have some documentation on it, so.
Glad to have you. What's the board's preference? Do we have enough information already in the packet?
It's a slam dunk to me.
We just had a presentation, pretty much covered it all.
It was in July, yeah.
Yeah.
Doug? I didn't mean to cut you off.
Go ahead.
That Doug.
I was just gonna say, I, I wonder why you're only asking for a million dollars when it looks like you need a hundred million.
This, this grant process only caps at, at one million for ask.
Oh.
So, that's, that's a reason.
So you'll be back?
We'll be back.
Doug?
Um, my only question has to do with the, trying to work a little bit better with the local community on, certainly, on the issue of parking. And the idea that the town is coming forward as a joint applicant for this, but there certainly was some contention about the trees that just got taken down this past week and creating a very much of a, less of a Woods Hole feel in the village. I feel a little mixed that we are working so hard to help HOE on this, but didn't feel we got, at least the Woods Hole community doesn't feel they got the same help on that issue.
I, I have a, um, a, you know, similar comment in the sense that, you know, it's, it's a real challenge to the, you know, not just, um, HOE, but all the scientific organizations, um, in Woods Hole in terms of economic vitality. And as we move into the future, as this project is, um, you know, foundationally set in, into a concept that's gonna go, you know, far into the future, whether it's floating or, you know, however it, um, you know, it adapts to, to climate change, sea level, all those things. And I, I think that all of those considerations have to be balanced with the, the unity of the economic survival in the future of Falmouth and that the scientific organizations are a very big part of that. You know, certainly located in Woods Hole, but important to Falmouth and important to the entire Cape. So, uh, in balance with that, and I, you know, I, I certainly, um, agree with the issue of sensitivity and balance, but it, but I do think we really have to look at the gravamen of employing a lot of people and supporting science in our, our young folks, people who are educators, people who are, who are growing up here in, in Falmouth, who, you know, we'd like to, to have them stay in Falmouth for a, a sustainable community going forward. I, I think that, you know, that, the care and balance, um, has been reflected in, in some of the planning and, and has to continue to be reflected, but I, but I think it's an absolutely crucial project.
Any other comments? We were just taking questions. In which case, Doug?
I see that you've chosen the steel pile with the concrete deck. Was there any consideration to actually constructing a solid earthen bulkhead?
So that, uh, was the design that was developed in the feasibility study. We really are looking at trying to come up with more innovative solutions than the one that was based that the original study developed. We wanna have a, a facility that's adaptable and sea level rise is really the underpinning for a lot of the decisions we're gonna have to make. And that's one of the gonna, one of the key scopes that we're gonna be doing in this part of the, in the next phase is to really understand the sea level rise impacts and then to develop an innovative solution that involves an adaptable facility. So that, that was a, you know, was kind of like a, a baseline, that design, but we're by no means wedded to that.
You're just starting to design?
Yep.
Are there any other questions?
One other question. Given the, I don't know if you've heard the response from the public about the modern-type design of the proposed Steamship Authority building, your building looks a little modern. Are you taking those comments?
I'm well aware of those comments, certainly.
I mean, I don't know what else you could do with a, a building of that scope, but just to give it some thought, I guess.
Sure.
If there are no more questions, would there be a motion?
I would move, uh, is it approval or is it a separate?
To authorize the application.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Next, we have, uh, our eight o'clock business calendar, a report from the Board of Health. Welcome, Madam Chair.
So just for background, while it's getting set up, uh, this Board of Selectmen has been asking all of our committees to come in and make presentations and just let us know, um, things that they think are important, let the community know what they're working on. And, uh, just wanna welcome you and appreciate you doing all the work that it takes to do that.
Thank you, and thank you, Madam Chair, Selectmen, Mr. Suso and Mr. Johnson Stubbs. Diana Malloy, I'm the Chair of the Board of Health and I hope that, um, my fellow members will just rise when, um, I introduce them to, uh, the public as you appointed them all, but to get reacquainted a little bit. We have Mr. Rafferty. Steve Rafferty is a civil engineer. He's the Water Superintendent in the Town of Falmouth. Uh, Ben Vanoy is away on, um, some scientific trip. Um, he's a senior scientist at Woods Hole Oceanographic and he's one of our new members. Kevin Kroger is the, um, he is a supervisor for research as a bio-geochemist um, at, uh, at the USGS Woods Hole Marine Center. And George is our newest return member, if you will, as a former county health officer and wastewater treatment plant operator. And we just wanted to recognize John Waterberry, who, um, was very active, uh, with our group over the last year and, and moved on to, uh, work on some other projects, um, in June. So, also, we have a new, um, health agent, as you know, but Scott McGann is a registered sanitarium, septic system inspector, soil evaluator, food safety certified trainer and lead determinator. And Mallory Langler is our assistant health agent. Linda is the administrative support in the office and Morgan is contract food inspector, so. Uh, a while back, we decided to take a good look at what our mission was and, uh, really try to broaden our scope. Uh, there was a lot of work that gets done on septic systems and water quality issues, et cetera, through the board, but we wanted to look at the whole, um, public health component and community health. So, right now, we, we did revise our, um, our mission statement and at each meeting, we read the mission statement to, uh, reflect where we were, where, where we need to focus on. And our ongoing business agendas do include septic-related issues for variances, requests, some discussions, some guidance, um, as brought to us from Scott. But we also add in community and public health-related issues. Uh, we also have updates on our operations and staffing from the health agents, so we have an idea of where, um, they're at as well. Uh, I believe it was in August of 2017, there was a tragic event at, um, a pool here in Falmouth and it led us to evaluate our current regulations related to the pool. There's the state regulations and then our local regulations. We did, uh, review the Department of Public Health report of that incident. We reviewed other towns' regulations. We gathered input. We had our first responders come and present to us. And in looking at all that, we were aiming toward, is there something we can do to increase safety in our pools? And we did revise our regulations. We've got it on the agenda, uh, for this fall again, to relook at those, to see what we put in place and, um, how we're doing with that. We're constantly looking at innovative and alternative septic system maintenance and the compliance. Um, we did address, there were at least 20 homes in Falmouth that were non-compliant with their, um, with their maintenance contracts and thus their monitoring requirements. And so, we worked with the town council, uh, to gain support. We were able to obtain compliance with those homes and have put a process in place for future measures so we don't get so behind in, in dealing with that. So going forward, Scott's got his marching orders. Um, we also participated in the multi-department work, um, requested by Mr. Suso to overcome the barriers related to septic systems in the accessory apartment bylaw. And I think we've got some, um, good work that we're able to accomplish with that. Our health agent, um, and the assistant health agent is always, um, looking at sanitary code for restaurants and we have tried to provide ongoing support for the health agent to ensure that there is compliance with our restaurants and the multiple vendors of the activities that we have going on in the town. And I believe in your packet, you have a, um, a summary of some of the statistics that, uh, Scott has provided. And I'm gonna just give him a minute at the end to kinda just, uh, drill through some of those quickly. Obviously, down here, we have a particular interest in bloodborne disease prevention also. Our assistant health agent was, um, called up for the military and was, uh, not here for a while. She's back and we're glad that she's back and we, um, will be working on looking at some initiatives for the spring. It's a priority. The Little Pond Sewer Service area also, um, was quite a bit of work, this, uh, for this department. We streamlined processes for sign-off and connections and, um, were able to confirm abandonment of current cesspools in working with, um, our health agent and the others working on the project. We have had an increase in community events, um, which just im, does impact, um, the health department workload and basically it's seven days a week, um, that a lot of these, uh, activities take place on the weekends. So, we're constantly trying to support, um, Scott and the efforts there to make sure that, um, we do have a work-life balance for him as well. With our, um, new health agent, we have spent some time getting to know him, him getting to know us, what it is that we feel that we need to hear about, what are some of the things that, um, we can get, grant authority to him to manage. Um, we have worked, or he has worked diligently to, um, increase the efficiency, the customer service and our availability for public service. And I think he's done a great job of trying to, um, get all that up and running and make some needed changes going forward. Um, he has listed some operational initiatives in, um, part of the handout that we have. This is all fake, by the way. Those aren't real names, just something to have a placeholder, um, for that visual. And we did identify some priority initiatives for this fall. And in your packet, you do have, um, a handout that identifies some, um, priority initiatives for the board. We've split them up into two categories. One is more operational and then the other one is some community health initiatives. So, the members of the board, um, actually, we did, um, a needs assessment amongst ourselves, gathered our information, came up with some things that we felt were priorities, kinda scored them and what we thought we should be able to tackle and go forward at this point in time. And then did put some other topics that were important, um, on hold so that, um, as we finish up with one, we may be able to, um, add in some other topics going forward. Ongoing, we're looking for Scott, um, to help us to continue to broaden our scope of all the regulations that, um, we have the authority for. And so, oftentimes, it, on our agendas, we've asked for a specific topic and he will review some of the regulations. We'll have some discussion. And so that ongoing education, as we bring new members onto the board as well. And we have had several presentations from community members with expertise in various health-related topics, looking for our support or guidance in how we can support their initiatives in the community. Um, and that list of identified, um, priorities is just a guide for our agenda. It's also, you know, helping us to keep on track with what we said we wanted to do. And there's also attached to that, there is a, a summary letter and that is just for your reference for, um, a little bit more detail on some of the things we worked on that, um, was presented here tonight. Um, Scott, would you take a minute and just go through your statistics?
I'll be brief. So, yeah, we had a lot of changes this year. Obviously, David retired and I came on and Mallory was away on military leave and we found somebody else to plug in. And we did add 16 hours for food inspections and our total was pretty good. We did 2,136 site visits or inspections throughout the year, which is pretty good. About 1,100 were septic-related, 725 restaurant inspections. So we've done probably beyond the two times per year for your average food establishment. We do, do, we do have with the fairgrounds, a lot of temporary food, a lot of temporary food. Um, there's an event going on at the fairgrounds pretty much every weekend, so that eats up a lot of our time. You know, somebody has to get out there and do those inspections. Uh, we issued about thirteen, uh, about 1,400 licenses and permits. Total revenue was $132,000. So that's a lot of, that's a lot of administrative, going through the permit applications and so forth. That includes septics or food applications or temporary food. So that's the bulk of what we do is the, sort of the inspection end. Um, we do other things such as, uh, the communicable disease surveillance through Maven, which is the, uh, software program. We do food, flu clinics like we just had back on the 10th. So we do, uh, track on diseases or complaint, you know, if we get food complaints or we just get general diseases, we do follow up with that. And in terms of our household hazardous waste, yeah, nice to know that of all the upper Cape towns, we're 45% of the game. So of all the four towns, we accomplish, we, we, we were about 45% of the total waste removed in the hazardous waste collections of all four that we had this summer. About 767 households, so that's a pretty good number. We do, uh, manage a, a Sharps kiosk at the fire department and we took out 1,050 pounds of used syringes over the year. So that's quite a bit too as well. It's a lot. I know, I, I double-checked that number and that's a lot of, uh, it's a lot of, uh, syringes. So, that's sort of us in a nutshell. Diane, uh, Diana went over all the main sort of, you know, things that we do. But in terms of, um, inspections and revenue and so forth, that's where we're at, okay?
Really great report. I mean, just in terms of comprehensiveness, where you're at, the review, um, great process for going forward, great organization in, in terms of the board and, and working together. I, you know, like, one of the things that, as I was looking at you coming up, I, for example, working with the schools, you know, the issue vaping, for example. I, you know, is that something you, you'd be, you know, kind of, uh, working with them on or having some kind of expertise or?
Yeah, it's one of the things that we have on our, our list of things to do, our to-do list. And we, I was just at a meeting with the, the other health agents on the Cape and that was actually a half-hour talk on that and how the devices are much different from, and my kids come home and talk about it as well, even at the, uh, even at Lawrence School, so.
Huge now, huge now. And I'm sure parents have a lot of questions. They, you know, they wanna know information, parameters, all that kinda thing.
Yeah, no, that's a, it's a, it's a. Yeah, no, it's a growing thing. It's grown a lot over the last several years.
Absolutely. Scott, it was in this last year that we made sure that the age...
Yeah, we updated the regulations to 21. So, the regulations are ahead of what the state's going to enact, but that doesn't necessarily, you know, get it out where we need. It's more the education piece that needs to happen.
Great. Megan?
Nothing, other than to say, I was just totally, you know, really surprised when I was able to look at what you submitted, to see that, you know, when you're talking about tick-borne illnesses to septic to needle...
Yeah, we're a check of all trades, so no doubt.
I mean, it's really, you know, it's a board that, you know, really covers so many kind of critical issues that face folks. So, I love the idea that you were able to put together your initiatives and that you're just kind of reviewing that, and I think it's a nice way to map out, when you have such a broad mission statement and such a broad spectrum that you're touching upon, to have that in place to kind of continue to bring back some of that focus. I just, you know, I really appreciate that, and it's very helpful, I think, for us to see the priorities that a board has, because all of the, you know, a lot of these things are issues that might come before us in some way, and it's helpful to sort of have a sense of where it is in your scope of importance, or sort of the next level of when you're gonna be kind of maybe working on an initiative to address it. So, it's very helpful to have a visual like this, so thank you.
Doug?
I don't know how many people in town are still drinking water from wells on their house, but I wonder if there's a process for people that are on a well to get their water tested?
Oh, sure. Yeah, we have the kids.
How does that work?
We have the kids, so they can get a kit from us, and we give out about, we probably get in three or four a week that come in, and we have a courier service that comes from the county on Wednesdays and picks up the bottle. So, I would have, if somebody, a resident came in, I would have them grab a sample, I would tell them to give a fresh sample on Wednesday morning and bring it by us, or they can go directly to the lab at the courthouse as well, but we have a courier service that...
And what do they test for?
Well, well, water. They're gonna test for pH, they're gonna test for conductance, they're gonna test for bacteria, they'll test for, you know, various different things that we're looking for. You can get more elaborate, and you can test for VOCs if you're concerned about things like, you know, the old plume, or if you live near a gas station, you can check for VOCs. So, the kids can be expanded, contracted, you know, as needed, based on what they want.
And also, at some of our meetings, we've had the folks from the base out, working on that, reporting off to us, a discussion back and forth related to that as well. And I just wanted to speak to the vaping. You know, it was one of the things that we've, one of the initiatives is obviously the opioid epidemic and the crisis, and in that is a whole array of things that go various ways. So, we're actually working with Susie Hartman from Health and Human Services, as well as the Falmouth Substance Commission, to try to see how we can support some of the efforts that are going on and what our part could be. So, each of us, as board members, have on that list kind of tagged things that we're passionate about to be the liaison from our board to that. So, that's where sometimes we'll get people coming to us, or us coming to them, and trying to tag team. So, we're, A, not reinventing the wheel, and obviously, with such a large scope, we can't tackle it all, so how do we support some of the efforts? And I think the other thing that, you know, going forward, how do we make what we're doing, or what some of the public health issues are, more transparent in the public? And so, we're looking at how to utilize media, social media, website, et cetera, to get the word out as far as what's going on. This weekend, for example, the police department had the "Take Back Your Medicines," you know. How do we tag team with that and show the support there and get the word out in various ways? So, that's some of what we'd like to try to do over this next year.
Excellent. Doug?
Someone asked me about the adding denitrifying systems to the sewer systems in certain areas, and whether the town should be enacting a bylaw for that. My understanding is that could be a regulation actually that the Board of Health imposes without going through any other board, that the Board of Health could just say, "All new construction had to have denitrifying systems," or "All new construction in this area had to..." But it could simply be a Board of Health regulation.
I would think so, but I would check with Frank first on it, though.
And the other thing is, as George has come back onto our committee, one of his assignments, which I think we gave it to him before you got here, George, was really working with John Waterbury and the board to look at our local regulations for innovative systems that we wanna go forward.
That's why we appointed him to the board.
Exactly, exactly.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Is the vaping, is mostly smoking tobacco, or is it marijuana, or both, or what is that?
Vaping is, suppose, it's nicotine in small, very small amounts. So, what they're trying to do is to have the smaller nicotine without actually smoking the cigarette, so unless they're vaping something else, and well, and they probably are, I mean, you have to keep up with it. You probably know more 'cause you see it.
Only 'cause I have a teenager, but I think some parents have concerns that they're vaping, they're using the vape for marijuana, so.
And one of the things that, I don't know if the chief is not here, but he has been working on for quite a while, is the in-plane site. I don't know if anyone attended the program last year, but after that, there was some discussion about how do we bring this to parents to see, like, I was blown away with some of the things that, you look like it's a regular high school kid's room, and there's all kinds of paraphernalia there. So, he's been working really diligently to get a trailer that he can actually bring to sites where parents currently are. So, we're not asking them to come to one more thing, we're bringing it to them to say, "Hey, take a look at this. You can do anything like this," you know? So, try to just bring that awareness. And again, I know that they're doing a lot in the school systems, and that's where we wanna try to, again, tag team and see how we can support any of the efforts that are currently going on, 'cause we can't fix them all, as we know.
Very, very comprehensive. Much appreciated. Thanks very much.
Thank you, and thank you for your service and ongoing support of the board and our opportunity to be able to do this service.
Absolutely. Thank you. Next, we have on the agenda, report update on beach rules.
From the ruler of the beach. My name is Bruce McGarrel. I'm the beach superintendent for the town of Falmouth. I brought with me tonight Paul Moskowski, the chairman for the beach committee.
Thank you, Paul.
You have been given the initial review, and so, I'm not gonna read it to you. There's lots of material here. There's a couple of things that we found to be perhaps critical to this success. One was our clear, clean, and easily-understood implementation. We started that at orientation. We continued that with all the headguards and assistant headguards. We did that in my office, one-on-one. We did it in groups. We role-played. We role-played how to say no. We role-played how to say yes nicely. We did all those things because I'm a firm believer that leaders need to be taught how to lead, how to make decisions. I'm an old educator, so that comes natural to me. And so, that's how we started that. We started it simply, today is a game day, or today is not a game day. If it's not a game day, then every time somebody comes up and wants to start a game, we step out of the chair, we go down, we excuse ourselves, "I'm sorry, but today's not a good day for games, because it's overcrowded, and we want everybody to enjoy the beach." That was our line, and it works. It works well. If it's a game day, then we still get out of our chair, we walk over and say, "You know, it's perfectly okay for you to play your game today, but please understand, we may shut you down later when it gets crowded." It was that simple. We didn't blow whistles, we didn't yell or scream at anybody, we did it the old-fashioned way, face-to-face, eye-to-eye, and with a pleasant demeanor. It works. And I'm really proud to say, I think this program worked very well, very well. I'd entertain any questions.
Great.
Glad to hear your report. Now, it's great that you kept all the records of the number of interactions, and it was very helpful and clear.
I had a great staff this year, and so, they were very helpful to contribute all these numbers and things on the beach logs that we keep at every beach for every day.
I know that the Heights Association usually attends your meetings.
Yes.
Was there any comment with respect to...
Thank you for asking. There was a representative one day who said, "You know, Bruce, you actually did what you said you were gonna do." She said, "I was playing ball with my grandson, and the lifeguards came over and said, 'Excuse me, ma'am, if the ball gets thrown in any direction that's not catchable, we're gonna ask you to stop, but right now, go right ahead and play.'" She was thrilled that the thing that we implemented was actually working for her, and she loved it.
Well, it was the softball question.
Okay, very good.
Right. No, I just, I have to say that I think you strike a great balance, because, you know, these are places for people to come and have fun, both people that live here and people that are visiting, and so that, you know, I know you call it old-fashioned, and it's sad that it has to be characterized as old-fashioned, face-to-face polite discourse, but that is exactly what I saw every time I was on the beach. You know, we were asked, we tried to put an umbrella up close to the water. I have a very fair, a brother-in-law is very fair, straight from Ireland, and, you know, they came over and said, "You're a little too close, 'cause it's gonna block the view. Can you just move back?" And it was perfectly reasonable, and again, just in a way that was firm, that's what was gonna happen, but in a really professional way. So, thank you for, you know, training everyone to do that, and then for keeping track of this, so that when people bring concerns, we have some real sort of numbers to show them.
I like that every explanation, or when you discussed it with people, had a reason for it, so rationale, saying you're blocking line of sight, or worried about someone else getting hurt, so they, people could understand, it isn't just a rule there for rule's sake, it's there for everyone to be able to have a happy, safe time.
I think that increased their understanding, and it took away potential animosity and hurt feelings, because they had an explanation or reason why we were doing that. So, I thank you for that. That's exactly right.
Terrific.
The only suggestion I have going forward is maybe, our biggest problems this summer were trash, alcohol, and dogs. And so, we're looking for maybe some support for scrutiny from the animal control for dogs before nine o'clock and after five o'clock. Now, I understand that gets into overtime and some issues there, but right now, that's the biggest complaint we got most of the time, was that after five o'clock, when there's no beach staff available, dogs were on the beach, and many were off-leash, which meant they got into people's personal belongings, they got into food. They sometimes scared children, because sometimes children don't know if it's a friendly dog or not, so that's the biggest suggestion I have a request for.
Mr. Suso, would you make a note of that for next season, when we, you know, just let us know if that's, if there's a plan that can be made for that? Appreciate the suggestion.
Thank you. Anything else?
Doug?
Yeah, the trash is a huge problem, and it's gonna take more than just the beach committee to think about what to do, because, you know, it's becoming like, the beach is becoming the dump for people that bring bags of household trash. I don't know if it's because they're heading home for the weekend and don't wanna leave it around, but we're really gonna have to think of something, and maybe it's just gonna be a huge fine for littering, and, you know, it's gonna have to be some real thought put into it.
You know, go ahead, you'd be the expert.
Well, I was gonna suggest to you that at a beach managers' meeting two weeks ago, trash is the biggest problem that they have in every town on the Cape. And that's because the parking system is getting maxed out, so more and more people are bringing their stuff to the beach, either by bike or being dropped off, and they don't wanna contain it, they just... Most of the beaches down Cape don't have trash receptacles on the sand anymore. They have them in the parking lots. Now, that affords a cleaner beach, but it also is a temptation for people to drop off stuff as they drive by. So, we've been working closely with Linda Davis, and also, we are, the beach department is sending a representative to a trash meeting, forgive me for not having the proper title, but it's November 1st, and so, we're sending solid waste advisory from Falmouth, but it's down Cape, it's a Cape-wide thing, and the beach committee has appointed an ad hoc committee to go and attend that meeting and see if we can come up with some solutions. So, I'm working on it, Doug.
Okay. I noted, when I was traveling in Ireland, that the fine for littering was 2,200 pounds, and you don't see any litter in Ireland, so.
The other thing, I mean, your personal interaction with folks has been so successful here. I mean, I don't know if you could implement just handing a little, you know, flyer, please, you know, carry off what you bring in, you know, just some kind of, you know, just so folks have an awareness that you're watching it, you really appreciate, you know, help us keep the beach clean for everyone. It's just a thought, Megan.
And just one other thing, I think we're probably gonna need to assess if the number of receptacles that we have is appropriate now for the usage. You know, I know, you know, you have sort of, depending on the beaches, we have a certain number of trash receptacles. I mean, you know, some beaches certainly get more use than others, or are more family beaches, where the people leaving have maybe more trash. So, I think we might need to look at, I mean, like, a place like Old Silver Beach. I don't know. I don't know if we need, you know, an additional receptacle, or if it's just a matter of, you know, teaching people that they need to carry it off, but a lot of days in the summer, those little ones that you put the hand in and are maxed out. And there's just not, even if people wanna do the right thing and bring their trash, it's just can't handle all of it, and so...
I recently had a meeting with Jim Grady, and we are coming up with, mostly him, I can't take too much credit, but we worked together to come up with a new plan with the potential packer truck, the new packer truck he's hoping to get, and we're gonna be able to set up a system where we get to the beaches more often, okay? And so, what we did this year that was a big help was Ed Dow, who is the beach maintenance foreman for the highway department, he came up with a schedule where we had multiple shifts, so that we were able to get to the beach trash at seven in the morning throughout the day, and sometimes as late as five to seven o'clock at night. That really was huge impact, yet reducing the trash, and yet we still have tons of stuff. So, it's an issue Cape-wide. We're hoping that Cape-wide, we could come up with some solutions that Falmouth could consider.
Good plan.
Such a shame, because we go to all these efforts to try to reduce plastics and reduce waste and keep everything clean, and then people are bringing whole bags of trash and setting them next to a full trash can, and the seagulls pick it apart, and it blows into the ocean, and it's just like, it's the worst possible place for it.
Right, for trash. Thank you, Bruce. Great job.
And thanks to the committee for all your input. I now wanna welcome, from Cape-like Compact, Maggie Downey. Thank you for your patience. We are running a bit late, but always good to hear from you. And I know Ron wanted to give a little minute, however it works out, okay? Great.
Peter, I might need your help, is it a touchscreen?
No, it's in the drawer. It's a PC.
I'm pointing. Yes, you have, which one are you? Yep, that's it.
There you go.
Thank you.
And then, if you want to use the remote this ring there.
Oh, thanks. Okay, if you slide down. Slide down to normal, where am I sliding? Wait a minute, where am I?
You can go to that little screen down in the lower right.
F5.
Oh, I can't see it. There you go.
Yellow. Yellow, more...
Where am I?
That's, no, just a more to the right, right? I think that's it.
Nope, wrong one. Just hit okay.
Okay.
There you go. Sorry, my apologies.
We just like to make it as hard as possible for people to...
No, I can't see anything. I'm like, where is it?
Yeah, exactly.
We're on the edge of our seats now.
It's very nice, all this new technology, I like it, but it'll take a while to get used to. So, thank you very much for the welcome. My name is Maggie Downey. I'm the administrator of the Cape-like Compact, and I'm here tonight with Phil Moffett from the residential program, and Ron Zweig, he's your representative to the Cape-like Compact, and he loyally attends every meeting, and not only that, is the designated driver for the Vineyard folks, who he picks up and drives to the meeting. So, much appreciated, everything that Ron does for the Cape-like Compact. And I am going to give a very brief overview of the Cape-like Compact, and then I'm going to get right into some of the highlights of the next, the components of the next three-year energy efficiency plan. Believe it or not, the 2019 to 2021 is the fourth three-year energy efficiency plan that the Cape-like Compact has been working on under the Green Communities Act. I'm gonna use an acronym I put up here called PAs, Program Administrators. Under the Green Communities Act, the seven investor-owned utilities and the Cape-like Compact are referred to as program administrators, so I just wanted to put that in perspective. So, the Cape-like Compact, as you may know, is an award-winning energy services organization operated by the 15 towns on the Cape and the six towns on Martha's Vineyard. Our mission is really a three-legged stool to provide and operate the energy efficiency programs here on the Cape and Vineyard, to advocate for consumers, and that is done primarily through our involvement at the Department of Public Utilities in regulatory proceedings. I think I was here giving an update on the rate case and the grid mod docket last year, and also to negotiate the terms and conditions for a competitive supply contract for those customers who wish to stay and choose to participate in the Cape-like Compact's power supply program. We've also become a model for other community choice aggregation programs in Massachusetts. There are now over 162 towns and cities in Massachusetts that are municipal aggregators, Boston being the largest that is exploring it, Newton was just approved, and so was Worcester. Newton was just approved, um, and so was Worcester. So there are many, many cities and towns that are, um, it took, took a while, uh, the Cape-like Compact's been doing this for many, many years, but there are now lots of us working, um, trying to get good terms and conditions in our power supply contract. So far, we're the only set of 21 towns who have applied for and administer the energy efficiency programs locally. So some background on the energy efficiency plan. I put up here on the first bullet is the language right out of the Green Communities Acts of 2008 because it really shapes everything that the compact does and is all of the programs. It specifically says that electric and natural gas resources shall first be met through all available energy efficiency and demand reduction resources that are cost-effective and less expensive than supply. So in 2008, the legislature acknowledged that it is cheaper to use less energy and through energy efficiency programs, demand programs which reduce the peak. We have to build our infrastructure to those peaks so that the lights are on in the middle of the summer when we're using the most, um, electricity. So reducing that peak, it's more, is cost-effective through demand response programs, through energy efficiency programs than building new power plants, poles and, stringing new poles and wires as, and substations. So we are the first stop before we start to, um, look at the grid and how we provide energy throughout the Cape and Vineyard. So the 2008 Greens Communities, and what did that do? And in nutshell, it took, told the Cape-like Compact, we had very small, if you remember, about $5 million energy efficiency programs. We only had, um, a system benefit charge that we collected every month on the electric bill. And then when the Green Communities Act was passed, we were mandated to, as it says, to pursue all cost-effective means. So these programs got very large. They became three-year annual budgets and we changed from just submitting a plan as a FYI to the state to being a fully adjudicated plan. And what that means is we are required to submit our budgets, um, and all, our plan, we're also cross-examined by the Attorney General's Office, Department of Public Utilities, and other stakeholders in a very, very rigorous, uh, 90-day proceeding that starts on October 31st, on Halloween, and will culminate in a response direction from the Department of Public Utilities by January 31st, 2019 on this three-year plan. So we were bobbing along, merrily submitting our plan and till this summer, when in 2018 the legislature passed some very significant amendments to the Green Communities Act. These are the first major amendments in 10 years to the Green Communities Act and it's actually caused a major pivot in what is being delivered by the Cape-like Compact or being proposed as well as other, the investor-owned utilities in Massachusetts. And then there are four key things that I wanted to draw to your attention. The first is the amendments to the Green Communities Act require and explicitly allow for cost-effective energy storage and other active demand management technologies to be incorporated and funded through these, through the energy efficiency plans. That means battery storage as well as, um, we're, right now we offer a cool smart cooling program where you can voluntarily shift your air conditioning in the summer for, for an incentive. So it explicitly affirmed that storage, batteries, and this was something that was, wasn't clear in the prior legislation. It also added cost-effective strategic electrification. Now that's a mouthful. So what, what the legislature has determined that in order to, in one of the many ways to meet their Global Warming Solution Act deadlines, which sets that we have to reduce our greenhouse gases by a date certain, we are going to focus on the heating systems for residential and commercials that heat with fossil fuels, specifically oil, propane, and electric-resistant heat and move them to cleaner and greener forms of electricity. They have, we have an offshore wind farm coming in, we're negotiating hydro from Canada, they're greening, we're shutting down our coal plants, they're greening how electricity is produced. Therefore, they are moving, they want to move customers off of oil and propane and onto electricity that is then, um, sourced with cleaner plants. So for us, that means moving oil and propane, and we'll talk about that in a second, onto things such as cold climate heat pumps or geothermal ground source heat pumps. Also authorized the use of energy efficiency funds for renewables. So that we'll see as the years go by, using, um, EE funds for potentially for PV on your home or business and, or including that in the heat loan, which is something the compact is proposing. And it also changed the cost-effectiveness requirements from a program to a sector. I know you're like, what does that mean? I have a slide and I'll just go, just give you, um, an illustration of what that means. It, it will enable the compact and the other program administrators to do more and to deliver more programs because by statute, everything has to be cost-effective. It has to have a benefit-cost ratio of one or greater. What does that mean? It means for every dollar of our money that we invest, you have to get at least $1 in benefit back from the program, $1 in a benefit. So they, they raised that from a program to the sector level. And they also, and it's, I didn't put it up here, they also changed the name. They, they required this to be an energy plan, not an electric energy efficiency plan. So even though it was just a, you know, a minor change, you know, in wording, it's a significant, uh, direction and a shift in how they want and what they want to see us be delivering under these programs. So we met the Cape-like Compact, I met with the representatives from the Department of Energy Resources, the Attorney General's Office to indicate, and the direction that we got back from them, as I brought the message from the board, is they wanted to make sure that this plan includes the recent 2018 amendments. Um, and we've been working collaboratively with the other utilities to design a three-year plan that meets that goal. So this is what I was talking about. We have three sectors in my energy efficiency world and it's how the money's collected. You have residential sector, that's the monies that are collected from every residential electric account. We have a commercial and industrial account, small CNI, right up to the largest user on the Cape. And then we have an income-eligible where we're mandated to, at a minimum, put 10% of all funds collected to income-eligible, low-income programs. So prior to these changes, everything, every program had to be cost-effective. For every dollar I put in, I had to get at least a dollar out. And the Green Communities Act amended that to be at the sector level. So all of these initiatives and that are cost-effective and they had to be cost-effective on the program, now it's just the residential program. So everything to the right gets rolled up into a larger, um, the algorithm and a larger model for cost-effectiveness. And on the right, I just list the, um, the, the income-eligibles, definition of what a residential customer is. Um, the income-eligible is 60% below the state median income and then commercial industrial customers. Am I going too fast? Okay. So now I'm going to focus on the compact-specific enhancements because as a municipal aggregator, the statute specifically grants the cities and towns that run energy efficiency programs the abilities to do more than an investor-owned utility when it comes to delivering these programs. So, um, the CLC enhancements on the residential side is we are going to continue with cost-effective, no cap on the insulation offer for residential customers. If you might, you might recall, there was a $4,000 cap on the amount of insulation that we could, and weatherization work that we could do in your home. We found that what was happening is several of our homes required more than $4,000 and we would have to come back twice. So it didn't make any sense. It was actually driving our admin cost up, so we're going to continue without a cap. We're also going to continue to serve all electric customers who contact the compact, regardless of, if you heat your home, if you want to be served by the Cape-like Compact, whether it's your natural gas, oil, or electric, you can be served for us. And we're also going to continue to offer our 100% insulation for renters, um, and moderate-income customers. And elsewhere in the state, they only offer 90% incentives. So the compact found this as a barrier. Again, if you're, if you're a renter, but you pay your electric bill, it's hard to engage your landlord if they don't have an incentive to make the improvements. So we made it easier. We listened to what the landlord was saying and if, basically, if it's no cost to them, yes, they would let access to the house to do the, um, to do the upgrades. We're also going to continue to explore ways to serve our hard-to-reach customers. What does that mean? That's the, people who are only here in the summer and really when you're here in the summer, if you're a second homeowner, you don't want to have an energy audit when you're entertaining or you're here at your home. So we, we're continuously trying to determine the best way to market and to reach and have those customers who pay every month, just like those who live year-round, to participate in the programs. We're also, as I talked about, offering a battery storage and active demand response program. So there'll be about 300 custom batteries that we will be installing in both residential and commercial customers that we will rely on you to participate in our demand-response program. So from, in the summer, for several hours each day, we will use your battery to draw the electrons and take it into the grid, um, at no interruption to your service. You'll still be able to operate, keep your AC and all of your equipment running. And then the most exciting thing, I think, that the board is authorized is the strategic electrification offering. And basically, we, for many of you may or may not know, the Cape and the Vineyard have a really high penetration of solar. Now, we have a lot of homes that have put, installed solar, but this has not always benefited every income level. So the board is directed, we're focusing on 700 residential customers to convert them from oil, propane, and/or electric-resistant heat to either a cold-climate air-source heat pump or a ground source. It's going to depend because not every house, it's not a one-size-fit-all. Of those 700, 350 will be low-income and moderate-income. Um, and they, I'll talk a little bit more about the incentives, but the low-income, just like they now, will be receiving a heating system, a PV system, and a battery system as part of this demonstration offering. And they will also be required as, that to participate in our demand-response program. And the other, the remaining other incomes will be, their incentives will be based, will be tiered based on income levels.
Can I ask you about your cold-climate heat pumps?
Mm-hmm.
Is what technology that is? Is it? I know heat pumps have sort of a, a low-temperature limit when they don't really work effectively. This suggests that you've got something that goes even colder.
The cold-climate heat pumps are modeled to go, Phil, correct me if I'm wrong, it's about 20, it's about 10 degrees below?
Yeah, right around zero degrees.
Right.
So they, they've improved them, so they work better at low temperatures, basically.
Thanks. I actually have them because I had an old family electric house, so I installed them two years ago. And that last cold snap from December to that, and they performed fine. We were worried, we weren't sure, but, but they did fine. They're not designed for a winter that has continuously 10 degrees below zero, starting in December and ending in March. They, they work very well here. They also are only designed for open-floor plans. If you have an old house that has very many smaller rooms, this might, wouldn't be a technology that would be recommended. And on the commercial side, we're going to continue with the municipal incentives, up to 100% for all cost-effective measures. We've worked a lot, uh, very well with the Town of Falmouth on many projects. We've also have an eligible, 100% incentives for eligible nonprofits. Um, again, this was a barrier. We have lots of small nonprofits that couldn't come up with co-pays to do the, to implement the measures. So the board adopted 100% for all cost-effective measures. There's a series of criteria that they have to meet of relative to the size and their budget. Um, and again, as I talked about, we have a year-round tenants, um, 100% cost-effective incentives. So if you're a small business, but you're renting your space, again, once, we'll work with your landlord to offer 100% incentives. We will serve oil and propane, uh, and other fuels and focus on thermal measures. Again, things that the larger PAs don't do for small, commercial customers. And then continue to offer our Main Streets, which we've done several times in Falmouth and with great success. We also offer enhanced residential income verification, um, in-house because, you know, getting customers to participate in an income verification is a challenge. It's tar, it's hard. Um, so the compact has had a very successful internal income verification. We make it very simple for customers to participate. I put this up here because I think it's important that you see, um, the audience, that the low-income and the, the moderate income are not, they're not very, they're not a lot. There's a lot of municipal retirees, um, and others that are on fixed incomes that are eligible for much deeper and richer incentives. Um, and again, you, we pay for all of these programs, so it's a great way to make sure that we get a return on our investment. And the board also, um, on the 61 to 80, if you notice, one's SMI, which means state median income. The board decided, um, that they wanted to use area median income when they were looking at the moderate income, um, and then to cover the gap so that there's no gap, so that participants don't fall between the cracks. So the budget, um, actually the budget came down. These are big programs. This is a lot of money. It's a lot of our money that we're spending, um, every, every year. The budget that was just, that will be filed is $163 million over three years. With, we are required to true-up every year. So fully reconciling budget, it's kind of different from municipal finance. So for instance, in 2019, it's a $47 million budget. You're, you collect, you set rates at that amount, but if you don't spend that amount, that it's, the following year, it's deducted. It doesn't carry over. So if you only spent half of it, that would then reduce the amount that you collect over the three, over the three years. Everything is cost-effective with the BCR. We see at the top of $2.21, so for every dollar that we're investing, we're getting $2.21 back. We're saving significant energy savings, as you can see on the bottom, a total of, um, over 1 billion megawatt-hours lifetime. That's the life of all of the measures that are installed. Here's the bill impact. Again, the board talked, uh, we had several meetings on the actual bill impacts for the, each of the customers. So you can see right now that we pay $10.88 a month to run the energy efficiency programs. In the next three years, that's going to go up to 15, if it's approved, $15.72, with the increase being $4.84, with almost 95% of it coming from strategic electrification. The pilot on focusing on those 700 customers, um, again, most of them, they're all income-based. There are low-income and moderate-income, moving them off of oil, propane, and onto cold-climate heat pumps. As we electrify, they, their grid, especially for our low-income and moderate-income, electricity is still expensive. You want to make sure that they have the ability to self-generate, to help gain control of their bill. Um, and when you add solar and pair it with batteries, unlike now, if you just have solar, if you're, when the grid goes down, you can't use your solar, you're, it just, it stops working. That's the way it's designed. When you pair solar with a battery, you're still able to run your entire home. So we get an added benefit of coastal resiliency for some of our most vulnerable population, enable them to stay in their homes, warm and safe.
So that's a 50% increase?
Yes, yep. It's a 50, it's going from $10.88 to $15.72 if it was, if, if approved.
That's a big increase.
It's a, it's a very big increase. The board talked, talked at great lengths about the impact of this on the, on residential customers.
And this might be the silliest question of all, but I, does this mean the same programs that everyone loves from Cape-like Compact are not touched, like contribution to appliances, um, energy-efficient appliances, all that's roughly the same?
All that stays, it's actually expanding and pivoting to include storage, renewables, and specifically moving, I don't want to say the word fuel switching, but changing customers who heat with fossil fuels.
So does that mean there, there won't be those incentives? For example, if you want to, if you heat with oil and you have to get a new furnace, are you, you know, is there still a, a great benefit to get an energy-efficient furnace through Cape-like Compact?
Yep, you'll still have that option.
But what is the, what would be the change? For example, say you, what was last year's benefit, what will this year's benefit be?
Uh, the dollar amounts, we're still setting those, so I'm not going to set, so what, basically, it's, what they're termed is energy optimization. The customer will have a choice. So you'll be, you'll be provided, we're hoped to have an online calculator. So if you have an oil-heated home, they'll look at the cost of replacing your furnace with a high-efficiency furnace. They'll tell you the savings. They're also going to look at the environmental side. So what are the greenhouse gases? What are the pollutants associated with oil versus doing the analysis? What if you change to a cold-climate heat pump and you, what, what's the cost for operating that? What are the benefits to the environment? What if you hooked up with natural gas, say that was available? They'll do the same thing. So they'll, they're, they're trying to give the full spectrum of education for customers on how to move that. So there will still be rebates for high-efficiency furnaces, for high-efficiency appliances. What the program is doing is adding, and it's adding those four things that the legislation just changed in the summer.
Sort of tried to change behavior, but so is there a backup system if you have three weeks of, you know, minus 10 or something like that? What happens to your heat pump?
And in some, in some cases, they'll have electric resistance. In some rooms, there'll still be electric-resistant heat as a backup so that you don't have pipes freezing. Um, you can also do, in some, there's also a replace versus a displace. If you had an oil system, you could still leave your oil system in place and use that as an emergency case. So there are, you know, again, it's not so much telling you, it's giving you options.[1773.08] And then here are the incentives and here are the costs associated with each of the different options for customers.
Megan?
And so, with those 700 houses that, that you're looking to sort of switch over in that more substantive way, how do folks, do they just contact you for an assessment in general and then that will be presented to them as a possible? Or do they have to kind of seek you out for that specific thing?
Yes, would be called for an assessment. The low income homes are good, properties are deed restricted. So we'll be working with each of the towns. We started to get our list. We actually got the list from the Cape Cod Commission, thanks Christie, of all of the deed restricted properties. And so we'll be focusing on that. A lot of the habitat homes have, already have solar and cold climate heat pumps, air source cold climate heat pumps, because that's how they're designed. What they don't have is a battery. And another thing to note, when you put together the budget, we have to assume that the 700 customers don't have anything. In reality, you're, it is going to be, a customer might have solar and an air source heat pump, but they just want the battery. So, and that will also help to mitigate some of, some of the costs. But we don't, I don't know that, I can't plan that way, but that's in reality, that's just the makeup of the housing stock that we have.
Great, yeah. Go.
So what are the limits to the program? I, I don't see any advertising. Is it because you use all the money each year that you're already reaching enough people that you never want to advertise this program? I tell people about it all the time and haven't heard of it.
That's the hard to reach, hard to measure. There's always, it always amazes me, we actually exceeded our, on our residential side, where we exceeded the numbers that we planned for, for this year. So we can, we're continuously reaching new customers as people, houses change over, et cetera. So again, in this budget is also the marketing to reach those customers and to trying to think outside the box on how to get the hard to reach, hard to serve, which are two populations here on the Cape and the Vineyard. It's the seasonal homeowners, it's the very wealthy who aren't interested in energy efficiency. They might be early adopters on their own, or they might, so it's, they're architects and design. So that's the strategy is to reach that group, that population group.
And so you will be advertising this year?
Yes, we're always advertising. In fact, that's, just had presented, my staff just presented the draft marketing plan. We participate in lots of local events, actually. I was at the disability event that we had at, at the Gus Caney Center for the first time this year in Falmouth.
I got some light bulbs from you, so, thank you.
So that was, and that was a, and that was a great way to get at a population that might not come to another event, so I thought it was really successful.
And so, how close do you get to using up all the money that you budget each year?
Historically, if I had to look back, probably 75% spent. So what we do is, that's why, and every year we file, it's called an energy efficiency surcharge. So it's, again, it's due to fully reconciling, here's what we, here's what we said we planned for, here's what we spent, and then you adjust the following bill impacts for the next year to reflect that you've over collected.
And how often does the contract to do the, like, for a while, we could call Cape Save Direct, and then we had to go to Rise Engineering. So it seems like it changes a lot. How often does that change?
We changed to a market model maybe six years ago. And what that means is you can select Cape Save, and you can still choose your own contractor and bring your own contractor, but we have a lead vendor. So the lead vendor sends out different contractors that are, meet the qualifications. One of the things, all of the vendors have to be thoroughly vetted. They have to have background checks because they're in people's homes. They have to make sure that they have a level of insurance, et cetera. So, but you could, they'll, that contract for the lead vendor goes out to bid.
Three years, so, yeah, we went out to bid in 20, late 2015. The contract's banned, this current three-year period is breaking. We're going to reprocure sometime early next year. And like Maggie was saying, if you're going to.
If you're going to talk a lot, you should use the microphone, I'm sorry.
It's for the people at home, you have to actually go to the podium.
So like Maggie said, so we're going to reprocure next year, and Maggie was mentioning the market model, so right now, Rise.
I apologize, but could you just tell people who you are too?
Oh, sorry, yeah, so I'm Phil Moffett. I'm the Residential Program Manager for the Cape Cod Compact. So, so if you call us for a home energy assessment, Rise goes out, they do the home energy assessment. They don't do any of the insulation work, though. And that's what the market model is now. So they do the, they do the, the home energy assessment, and then they give you the option, or the customer the option, of either having them assign one of our insulation contractors or allowing you to pick one.
So, is there just a standard 800 number that we're always going to call? Or do we have to know to call Rise?
No, you should just, just call us.
Okay.
I have that on the last slide.
It's been on a lot of your slides on the bottom.
Good, okay. And we've stopped the interruptions.
So, next, next steps, two things. There's a survey online while you're sitting here. If you have your phone, you could go online while you're just with break and fill it out. If you're, what we want to know is, do you support what we're doing? Do you think the bill impacts are too high? We'd like to hear, there's a series of simple questions. You can also email at the address up there. And we want to know that we're, and again, every month, we all pay into this fund. We want to make sure that not only are the funds staying on the Cape and Vineyard and reinvested, but we're actually utilizing the funds in a manner that you want us to. We held stakeholder groups, and I'll digress a minute, we started last November through February, we held stakeholder groups all over the Cape and Vineyard asking, what is it that you want, what is it that we're doing well? What is it that we're not doing? And what is it that you want to see? And some of the things that we saw, renewable energy, storage, especially, there's a lot of early adopters. Falmouth, I sat through some pretty impressive presentations. A lot of you are on the cutting edge of technology, and we're playing, a little bit of catch-up on, you're waiting for this to come, come to you. So that was good affirmation. But again, we'd love to hear from you. The next steps, tomorrow, Wednesday, we file the 2019-2021 Energy Efficiency Plan with the Department of Utilities. They have until January 31st, 2019. They could approve it as submitted, they can amend the plan, they can tell us they don't like what we're proposing with our 700 customers and, and ask us to remove that and re, you know, and refile. So that's where we are right now. And here's our, here's all the information. The number is 1-800-797-6699 for a home energy assessment, if you haven't had one. Even if you just want to ask a question, find out what the rebates are, if you have, I get calls all the time, or emails, I have a dehumidifier, when are you doing a turn-in event, et cetera. So we're here, you know, Ron is very available too, so if you have questions, just let us know.
But I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
One second, Sam, and then Mark, come on up.
Maggie, we, we have some articles that are, coming up on our town meeting warrant, that are going to restrict solar panel implementation. And I didn't know whether you were aware of that and can help inform some of these petitioners or the planning board, both of whom are working in this direction. Were you aware of the fact? Yeah, and I know the state has sort of said, you know, we want people to put solar panels up. And I thought there weren't, they didn't allow any restrictions whatsoever. But we have these articles coming up at town meeting in just a few weeks. And I'm curious to know what kind of resources you might be able to provide to us to make sure we're making informed decisions.
These residential storage, PV, solar, or are these large scale storage solar projects?
This, there's an example where food, and, you know, sort of a small mall, put solar in, over a parking lot on Route 28, and it surprised folks.
Yeah, these are larger arrays put over parking lots and that sort of thing.
Ground mounted solar?
Ground, yeah, yes. The funds for energy efficiency are for, it's for residential, small scale, it's for roof mounted. And again, we're also driving, we're, one of the things we're proposing is that the heat loan be allowed to be used for solar. If you don't, may or may not know, the heat loan right now is a zero interest, $25,000 up to seven year loan for replacing your heating system, for replacing, for doing insulation or some knob and tube, asbestos, things, problems that you have, to barriers to doing things. So we're also asking that you add, we add in solar PV. So I'd have to just say that that's not in my wheelhouse.
That's fine. Well, maybe this one is, though, I have another question. We, we've attempted to become a green communities and have failed because we have large builders in town who don't believe the stretch code is in their customers' best interest. Do you have any literature that could inform us better on that decision?
So yes, Margaret Song on our staff, because she's our Commercial Program Manager, has worked very closely with several of the towns, doing the, most of the work for, working with them and their staff to get ready, that have passed at a town meeting. So we have lots of information. If you have questions, you know, it is, it's, it's a local decision. I know that she's working with Yarmouth, Harwich, three or four of the Vineyard towns, Orleans, all towns that have recently adopted or are getting ready. So you have to put together your energy mitigation plan. I can't think of the name, it's not the right terminology. So yes, the answer is, we'd be delighted. If you have questions, we can provide information. And then when you do get across the finish line, maybe, we're also here to help you with the requirements and the fulfillments and the obligations that you have to do as part of that.
And what's the contact person for that?
Margaret Song. And you can reach her at M-Song, S-O-N-G, at capecodcompact.org.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Or you can email me, can get hold of me, and I'll make sure that we get answered.
Just a constituent question here.
Mark Finer in Precinct 6. And, and I've had you guys do this service for upwards to 20 people in town, mostly senior citizens. And a lot of times, it's hard to convince them to take it, have it done. And I tell them that you pay for it, but I don't know how much they pay for it. Now, do you take this, this is a surcharge on strictly electricity?
Yes.
Where you get your funding?
Yes, only unfunded on the electric bill.
And, and is that a percentage?
No, it goes back to that slide, it's on.
Okay, that's the slide, so, we're paying $15 a month?
So, $10, right now, it's $10.88.
For everybody?
Yep. So if you're a residential customer, that's what you're paying for in 28, right now, $10.88.
Okay. Super snotty, I can tell people they're paying 10 bucks a month. And also.
It's going to be 15.
Yeah, it's going to be 15, times 21,000 in this town, that's, that's a fair amount of money.
It's a significant amount of money.
Right, that's roughly the amount of meters we have. Speaking of money, how much money are you guys sitting on? You said that you only spend 75%? Now, do you?
Our fund balance right now is about, is a little over a million and a half dollars.
So that's not a great deal.
And then, we tend to have this thing, a phenomenon called a hockey stick, where at the end of the year, we get a lot of very, very large commercial projects that they're waiting, and that's it.
Okay.
Thanks very much, very informative.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next on the agenda, we have a presentation regarding the Regional Policy Plan Draft from Cape Cod Commission, Kristy Senatori. And tell me that your correct new title?
Executive Director.
Congratulations. And sorry for the late hour, very much appreciate you coming to Falmouth to let folks know about this important policy.
Thank you very much for the invitation to be here tonight. We are in the process of a public comment period for the update to our regional policy plan. And a few of you have seen this presentation before, so I apologize if it's repetitive. I will try to go through it somewhat quickly. I know you still have a few more things on your agenda, and I'm happy to answer some questions. The Cape Cod Commission Act requires that the commission develop an update at frequent periods, a regional policy plan that really sets the policies for planning and regulation that happens at the Cape Cod Commission. So the update process typically happens about every five years. We began this update process several years ago with a homeowner survey back in 2014. We conducted several sub-regional public hearings at that time, getting some feedback. We held multiple stakeholder meetings also throughout the course of these couple of years. We surveyed a second homer, second homeowner population on the Cape. And then also, with the process that we're in now, is really subcommittee meetings that we've been having with the Regional Policy Plan Subcommittee of the Cape Cod Commission. And now we're into this public process. We're required to put this plan out for a 60-day public comment period. We started that comment period in September. The comment period will close on November 19th. So we are actively looking for participants to provide us feedback on the draft. Throughout this whole process, from 2014 up until today, there've been some common themes, some common threads that we've heard throughout the process. And really, that's addressing our housing needs, promoting regional capital and infrastructure planning, easing the local comprehensive planning process, while at the same time making sure we protect our natural resources and preserve our character. And that icon's not showing up, that's kind of funny. So this is just a draft table of contents, and you'll see that it has a number of sections. And I'm not going to walk through every single one of these. They are all available in the draft plan that's on our website, which I'll direct you to at the end. But I do want to just highlight some significant changes that are in this plan that, that weren't in the last plan. But before we do that, I just wanted to get back to the Cape Cod Commission Act, because really, when we started this update process, it was important that we take a look back at our legislative enabling regulations and our act to make sure that we're, we're meeting the goals and the purposes that were set forth in that document. And so really, those are conserving our natural areas, preserving our coastal resources, obviously protecting our water and natural resources, while at the same time balancing economic growth and providing adequate capital facilities. We need to coordinate those capital facilities with our regional goals, developing fair and affordable housing supply, and then preserving our historic and cultural resources. So taking a look at these broad goals gave us the opportunity to really, really revise the goals and objectives that we're putting forward in this plan. So the policies that are overarching in this document are really protecting and preserving the region's resources while trying to focus growth in these existing centers of activity across the Cape. So we're, we're required pursuant to the act to have a growth policy. And so the growth policy for this plan as drafted now is that growth really should be focused in these centers of activity and into areas that are supported by adequate infrastructure and guided away from areas that are, need to be protected for a variety of reasons, ecological, historical, or other reasons. And that development should be responsive to context, allowing for the restoration, preservation, and protection of the Cape's unique resources, while at the same time promoting economic and community resilience. So the, the, one of the main differences in this plan is really that context sensitivity. This isn't a one size fits all approach, it's a very unique approach to systems and looking at the Cape as a unique set of systems rather than parcel specific regulation. And so the systems that we've been able to specify really focus in three areas, natural systems, built systems, and community systems. And the growth policy recognizes the importance, not only of each of those systems, but the need to balance the impacts and functions to sustain the Cape in the long term. So we've broken down these systems into a variety of what you'll recall in the previous plans, this kind of issue areas. So natural systems really are the, the water resources, the ocean resources, our wetland resources, wildlife and plant habitat, and our open space. And the goal under this category is really to protect and preserve and restore the quality and function of those reasons, of our region's natural resources. Built systems, not surprisingly, really looks at capital facilities and infrastructure and transportation, looking at energy and solid waste management, community design and coastal resiliency. And here, the goal really is to protect and enhance our built infrastructure and environment that's necessary to support those healthy activity centers that we're promoting. And then finally, that third system is really community systems, things like cultural heritage and economy and our housing, and really protecting and enhancing the linkages between society and the natural environment. And so all throughout this plan, you'll see, really taking it back to our purposes in the Cape Cod Commission Act, is not, it's really balancing environmental protection with economic progress. So also new to this plan is the identification of place types. And I've mentioned those activity centers, which I'll go into in a little bit more detail. But there's eight different place, place types that are really unique to Cape Cod, they're unique to our region, and they've been developed specifically for the Cape. And so these range from natural areas to those rural development areas and suburban development areas, and then we've got our historic character areas, those maritime areas that we're all familiar with. And then we've identified community activity centers and industrial activity centers. So those community activity centers really have exemplify these unique characteristics, including community activity, business activity, and form that's, that's, that's significant into defining what goes into a historic or a character village. And then these industrial activity centers that are so critical to the Cape's economy, and then these military and transportation areas, our airports and other things like that. So we've identified these community activity centers across the Cape. And here is just, we have these for every place type, and this is just identifying the community activity centers. It's really accommodating mixed use and multifamily residential development. These are walkable, vibrant areas that are, they're preserving historic buildings and providing a diverse array of services, shopping, recreation. So these have adequate infrastructure or adequate infrastructure is planned, and they also have pedestrian amenities to support additional growth and development in these areas. And so we've done an extensive GIS analysis. It's all parcel-based, fact-based, specific analysis, and identified these community activity centers across the Cape. Not surprisingly, you'll see. Not surprisingly, you'll see a couple identified down in this region. And then I wanted to just briefly on the regulatory approach. So this regional policy plan really looks at the goals and objectives that were set forth in the Cape Cod Commission Act. And so you'll see those goals and objectives that I mentioned that are broken into those three systems, the community systems, the natural systems, and the human-built systems. So there's a goal in each of these areas and objectives. Then there'll be technical guidance that's being drafted at the moment through the commission to inform the goals and objectives and how a developer or an applicant would meet those goals and objectives. And then also the place types and the resource area maps that identify the types of unique resources that may need to be protected or at least are identified in this area. And then also new to this plan are performance measures. We've identified nine performance measures, and I think when we started, the list was probably about 100 things that we wanted to measure, because this is such a critical component to determining whether we're meeting our goals that are set forth in the act, really whether we are, whether we're doing a good job. And so protecting habitat, identifying drinking water supply issues, and connecting our sidewalks, and housing affordability, so some of these things that we'll be able to measure 12 months, 18 months down the road. And I'm sure we'll add to this list as we go on, but we had to start somewhere. And then lastly, the last and final chapter section in this plan is really recommended actions. There are a lot of things that we wanted to do as part of this plan and will continue to work on. So for example, a regional housing strategy, and continuing to work on regional capital planning and climate resiliency planning. And then, and then finally, also some of these that are in the regulatory realm, looking at our thresholds that drive the developments of regional impact that are reviewed pursuant to this plan, is there an opportunity to look at those thresholds? And that's something that we'll probably be visiting post-RPP implementation. So just to briefly touch on the timeline, as I mentioned, this draft was released for public comment in September. We've had three sub-regional public hearings, and the public comment period closes on November nineteenth. We're hoping to make some revisions to the plan based on public comment and feedback. And once the full Cape Cod Commission Board has approved the plan and sent it over to the Assembly of Delegates, then they'll have an opportunity to review this as its accounting ordinance. We are actively encouraging participation and looking for feedback on the draft. This was just a very brief snapshot. The draft is available in total on our website, and we encourage you to take a look at it. We're accepting comments via the website and also via that email address. And I'd be happy to take any questions or comments now. So, thank you.
Just really appreciate how the commission has evolved from a regulatory board to a planning agency and how helpful you are to towns when they're looking to do some planning.
Anyone else? Sorry, I'm a little...
She gets emotional about regional planning.
And you've heard it like three times already.
I know. This is really great. I've lost my voice temporarily, but thank you. Appreciate, sorry it's so late.
No worries at all.
Very informative.
Can I ask a question?
Come on up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Grant Walker, 71 Philadelphia Street. One of the town meeting representatives from precinct number three. I would ask for a little detail, maybe a little more detail, on how the energy part fits into the plan. Thank you.
Good question. Thank you.
So we have an energy goal that was, that's shown on one of those slides, and I'd be happy to go back to it, or you can find it in the plan as well. And it has the objectives that are, that fall under the energy goal. And then there's also a technical bulletin based solely on energy that outlines and articulates the methods to achieving those objectives and those goals that are set forth in this plan. So there are multiple documents that set forth the goals and objectives and then the guidance. So if you had a specific energy question, I'd be happy to answer it. If you wanted to take a look at it and follow up, I'd be happy to do that, too.
Great. So comments can be forwarded through email?
Yes. Yep, or on our website.
Great. Thanks again. Appreciate your patience with the hour. The next item on the agenda is a presentation and discussion on potential vacating of portions of Great Bay Road. Welcome, Mr. McConity.
Good evening. Peter McConity, Deputy Director of Public Works. Here before you tonight to, for a recommendation of some roadway section closures along Great Bay Street. Back in 2013, 2014, we had sections of roadway that were closed. We had seven sections that were closed in 2013 and one that was closed in 2014. Over the years since then, we've had additional recommendations from residents along Great Bay Street and along some of the side streets down in Maravista, was asking to close more sections of roadway. And then, as you know, this past August, we had the joint board meeting with the Board of Selectmen and the Coastal Resiliency and the Water Quality Management Team. At that, Water Quality Management Committee. At that time, there was three projects that Public Works presented. One of the projects was Great Bay Street. And basically, there was three phases to that to look at. One of the phases was looking at closing sections of the road. The second was looking at the stairs, the access stairs down to the beach. And the third was looking at the coastal erosion along the bay, or along the bank. So if you did an aerial shot, this is from Google Earth. As you can see, this is... There is the laser on this.
No, the laser doesn't work. Use the mouse.
Oh, it doesn't work?
That's error.
Okay. As you can see, this is Great Bay. This is Little Pond. This is Maravista. That comes right, this is the Long Straight, comes all the way down to Monarch Road. This area, right in through here, Randolph Street where it cuts across. Great Bay Street is basically Chestnut Street. The length of the roadway they're looking for is Chestnut Street to Monarch Road. It's about 6,830 feet. It's about 1.3 miles of roadway. I will go through the sections of road to make it a little more clear as to what's been going on over the years. This is a map, I believe, that you all received in your packets.
We did.
Yep, this is a map. So it's color-coded. The green areas are areas of the roadways that cannot be closed, either due to driveways. One of them was the boat ramp at Harrington. Another one is the public access down towards Brockton Street. So these areas cannot be closed. The areas in blue were areas that already have been closed. And the areas in red are areas that we're looking to close, recommended for closure right now. So in order to close a section of roadway, the only entity and the only board that can close a section of roadway is the Board of Selectmen. So that's what we did in 2013. That's what we did in 2014. So what we did is we drove after that, this past meeting, the joint meeting, Public Works drove this whole section of roadway, up and down all the streets over there, to see what roads, what sections can be blocked off, what sections cannot be blocked off. And this is what generated this plan. Once we generated this plan and generated the list of the roadways, we met with the Chief of Police to get a recommendation for the road closures. We also met with the Chief of Fire to get a recommendation, and both of them sent back positive recommendations for the closure of the roadways. Also, knowing that this was coming up, there was a good turnout at the meeting for the joint meet, at the joint meeting, so I did reach out to the residents that we've been working with on Great Bay Street and the associations to see if they could attend tonight's meeting, at least let them know that this is coming up tonight. So in 2013, 2014, these are the following roadways that were closed, starting from the top, top area, that would be up at Oak Street. And this area where the blue is, from Oak Street to Harrington Street was closed. From Randolph Street to Harrington Street, that's the next section that was closed. The following section could not be closed because of the boat ramp. Montauk Street to Cypress Street was closed. Iroquois Street to Toledo Street was closed. Toledo to Reynolds was closed. Reynolds to Mayflower was closed. Hiawatha to Providence was closed. And Harmony Street to Pocasset was closed. This averaged out to be about 1,500 to 1,600 lineal feet of the roadway.
Out of 6,000, did you say?
Out of the 6,300. The roadways that cannot be closed due to driveway access is the Harrington Street to Montauk Street. That's where the public boat ramp is. It's the major area to get in and out of the, for the boat ramp, public boat ramp. Cypress Street to Philadelphia Street, there are two driveways. Mayflower Street to Narragansett Street, there's a driveway along Great Bay. Narragansett to Palm, there's a driveway. Palm Street to Maple Street, there's driveways. Lawrence Street to Hamilton Street, there's driveways. Hamilton to Massasoit. And Pocasset Street to Boston Street, there are driveways. So those are the green areas shown in green. They cannot be closed.
What about all the way, going all the way down to Monarch Road? That can't be closed either, right?
So as you get further on, it's probably easier for me to come up. As you get further down to this area, this is Brockton Street. Some of these areas have already been taken care of. These are more low-lying areas that are down toward the beaches. There's not much more problems as far as the erosion goes. But some of these areas down through this area also have driveways coming off it, so we wouldn't be able to touch that on those areas. So we concentrated on the bigger areas that were up above that did have the erosion from the roadways. Basically, what it is to look at to close these roadways is that we have delivery trucks. You have UPS trucks. You have FedEx trucks. You have the lumber trucks. You have the trash trucks that, you know, they come down there. Just like on the other side, the trash trucks on the weekly routes, they'll have to back down the roads, just like they do on the other side. And they'll have to make arrangements, they'll have to make arrangements for that. And working with the fire chief, this will put up, be put onto their 911 system, so they'll, they'll know what roadways are closed, what roadways will be able to access. So the recommended sections for roadway that we're looking at is Philadelphia Street to Bond Street, Bond Street to Cedar Street, Cedar to Iroquois, Maple Street to Hiawatha, Providence to Lawrence, Massasoit to Harmony, and Boston Street to Brockton Street. Boston Street to Brockton Street is the area on the bottom in the, in the, in the red. And that's where the public landing is, so we'd be, wouldn't be closing off that full section. We'd be probably closing off two-thirds of it, so people would be able to access around that and get into the parking lot for turning around, be able to get the canoes down onto the beach. And this area is, is, once again, approximately another 1,500 to 1,800 lineal feet. So if you look at that whole section with the blue, all of the blue and all of the red, about two-thirds of the street minus the bottom area. Along with doing of the closing, recommended for closing of the roadways, we'll be posting the roadways. We'll be putting dead-end signs at the ends of all the roadways, or the beginnings of all the roadways along Toledo Street. Some of the roadways, as we drove along there, some of the street signs are very illegible. You can't read them. They're just, the letters are worn off them from the salt air or from their old street signs. So we are going to be looking at replacing some of those street signs along the way, too. We did, at the ends of the roadways that we did close, we did have the rectangular caution signs, the road closure signs, what have you. People had come up to me since that meeting and requested that those don't get put on at the end of the roadways. It's more of like sign pollution if we could just do the dead ends of these streets. So we'll remove the ones at the end of the roadways. We will have the barriers across the roads.
Is that an issue at night or anything? Would, I mean, if you're only going to have a boulder there?
At nighttime, yeah. I mean, those signs that are on the side of, they're just on the side of the road. I mean, the, I think minus those signs, it's still going to be the same for the visuals on the ends of all those roads. And once again...
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Peter.
No, go ahead. No, once again, this is just the overall aerial photo of the whole area.
At the end of those roads, so I know that's kind, it's been a little bit of a mixed bag with some, the way that some of the closures are, like sometimes it's some rocks, sometimes it's, you know, are you going to kind of have a uniformity of like a Jersey barrier? Are you going to do rocks? Is it going to be sort of the same thing at the each, you know, at the end of each road that you decide to close? Do you have to do something different because the roads are a little bit different in each area?
No. What we're looking to do, so what we had done in thirteen and fourteen is we tried to create loop roads, basically. So if a vehicle went down the end of the road, they could either go north or south to go up to the next road and come back out. In these areas, because of the roadway conditions, we weren't able to do that. So now we're just looking to close all the roadways that do not have driveways on it. So we're looking at doing that. But what we'll look at is we'll be looking at placing large boulders at the end of the roadways. We have plenty of large boulders at the pit, so we'll be able to put them in. And as you go down, if you go down there now, you will see boulders. Instead of being at the ends of all the roads, some of them are on the sides of the roads. We'll be taking those and flipping them out to the, to the ends of the roads. So what it'll do is, we've received a lot of comments of the vehicles going down there, the FedEx trucks, the trash trucks, while people are walking down there with the strollers or the bikers or the dogs. It'll get rid of that conflict between the vehicles and pedestrians or vehicles and walkers. So that's, that's the recommendation that we'd like to put forward. And it would be, just once again, it would be, these roadway sections, it would be seven, seven sections of roadway.
And at the end, when you hit those boulders, your choice is to back back out? There's not really a turnaround space?
There is not a turnaround. No. So, so when this did happen in 2013, 2014, we did get some phone calls from some of the residents that were at the ends of the roadways. That kind of went away. It didn't really become that much of a problem. It kind of went away after a short time, so they figured it out. But for all the feedback that we've got, all the information that we got at the meeting, it seems like all the residents want this to happen. I know that we've been wanting, we've been wanting a Public Works to close it down. The police chief is here tonight to be able, Ed, and to be able to talk about if there's any questions on that.
Ed, if you'd come up, I'll make us make her comment.
I don't know if you know the answer to this, but just in general, how would a navigation system be updated to show that a road is a dead end? So in other words, I'm just thinking about like FedEx trucks or, you know, whatever program they use to get to places or people visiting. Do you know how that's updated so that, you know, if somebody's using their phone to get? Because I know we had that issue on Trotting Park, that GPS system sent people down Trotting Park as the way to get somewhere the fastest. I just didn't know if there's, is there, if there was any sort of central place or that information is updated about roads?
I do know like with trucking routes, with this whole projects that's going on in downtown areas, we're looking at, this has been brought up for the past several years, is trucking routes on Main Street, trucking routes down Jones Road. We've been looking at that, and there are companies out there that actually track the GPS and track the trucking routes, and they send out information to us asking for roads that have been changed. So we get back to them. It's basically the federal carriers. As far as the local roads, I don't know if that could be more through Google Earth when they do the roads or when they see the changes. They could, it gets onto their maps and they connect them to their maps.
Thanks. I'm just curious.
I'm sure the FedEx trucks, they do it once, they're going to realize that.
Learning curve.
Yep, thank you.
Chief, just wanted to get some of your input, please.
Yeah, I've, I've checked the areas, and I've also had my supervisors go down and check the areas as far as, you know, safety, as far as we're going to be able to respond. And all the feedback is, it's not going to be an issue for us. It'd be basically a mirror image of the other side of the street that are all dead ends and we're able to service that. So as far as the plans go, as far as the public safety, we endorse it.
Is there anyone in the public that has a question? Ma'am, would you come up and introduce yourself?
Barbara McDonald, Hiawatha Street. And I just wanted to ask the DPW what the plan is, once these roads are closed. How are you going to fix the potholes? Because right now it's very treacherous. So what is your plan? Is there a plan?
Thank you.
So, so, yeah, so once these sections of roadways are closed, that's also closed for Public Works. We're not going to be able to get our vehicles down there. We can get down and grade the road before we do close it. We can get down and, with our equipment, and grade it. I do know some of the areas down there do have some large potholes that do fill with water. But if we do block these roadways off, we won't, we will not, we will not be plowing and we will not be grading after, after the roads are closed off.
Thank you.
Ma'am, you have to go to the podium?
For the time that I've lived here, I've never seen it plowed, which is not an issue. Nobody's driving.
Yep.
But to walk, you can't. It cannot be, I know it's labor intensive, but do we ignore this path because we've closed the road? It's a resource for the neighbors that we can't utilize. And Maravista is a speedway because we have it nicely paved. So it's a problem.
So like I said, if, before we close the roadways, that's something we can get on and take a look at. I know it's an ongoing thing with dirt roads. It happens, vehicles drive through it. It happens, you get the potholes. We have many roads throughout town. We'll get the calls for the, for the grading and we get on and grade them. But it's just, it's an ongoing issue that, for, for the grading.
But if you're grading it, I'm sorry, if you're grading it and then the road is closed, presumably it'll be less of, I mean, obviously, natural forces-
Yeah.
-impact sand and dirt. But it hopefully isn't going to be those divots that, or it'd be less common that those divots are there because those are made by that use of an unpaved road.
Yeah, the vehicles get down there and they get into the ruts with the wet ruts. And they just, they'll keep on pushing the sediment to the sides and it just makes the rut bigger and larger. So that's something we can take a look at before we do close the roadway sections.
Thank you very much. Sir?
My name is John Francis and I live on Great Bay, between Hiawatha and Maple. I have a question. Will you be able to address the plan for controlling the erosion along the embankment?
Thank you, sir.
So there's, there's three parts to this equation. This is the, basically the first part, to be able to close the sections of the roadway. The second sec, part of the section of the equation is the stairs that are under the beach. And the third is the erosion along the coastal bank. We have been out there recently to look at the coastal bank. There has been some private homeowners that have done some work, that have paid engineers to go out there and do some work private. They got a license through the town and do the work privately. When we did go out there, we did see that some of those areas are starting to be compromised. They are starting to see the damage from, it's a soft solution. So they are starting to see that the wind and the water, they are starting to see the damage along the erosion. So that's more, I think that's more of a, a bigger conversation that'll be with the Coastal Resiliency Committee, you know, as, as we move forward with that. But I think the, the first part of this is for the safety of the vehicles. So we don't have any vehicles going over the side of that, side of that Great Bay that we, that we close it off.
Much, much appreciated. So what would the board like to do?
Have one more comment?
Oh, sorry, missed one. Take one more question. We still have other matters. It's ten fifteen.
You don't have to run, Grant.
You don't have to run, though, Grant.
Thank you, Grant Walker, again. I was one of about a hundred and eighty people who live along Great Bay or on the side streets right next to it back in two thousand and thirteen who signed a petition asking for this very kind of thing that Mr. McConerty is proposing now along with dealing with the erosion. So I haven't communicated with all those people about this, but I would like to tell you that it's certainly my understanding that they would fully support what he is proposing.
Thank you. Very important. Appreciate that. Thoughts from the board?
I would move that we go ahead with the recommendation of both our DPW and our police chief, that this seems like a good idea to close these sections of Great Bay Street.
Second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have on the agenda, presentation on Locust Field Affordable Housing Local Initiative Program Application. Come on in and welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So for the record, I know it's late. I'll try to be as, as quickly as we can. This is an application or a request, I guess, for your endorsement of this local initiative program or LIP project called Locust Field Estates. It's not the permitting of the project. The permitting of the project and the fine-tuning details of things like landscaping and fencing and all those issues will be dealt with by the Zoning Board of Appeals if the project goes forward. But the local initiative program is a program that requires the Board of Selectmen to endorse the project and direct the town manager to sign the application to DHCD. And DHCD then reviews the application in detail and issues a project eligibility letter. And with that letter, the project then can go to the zoning board for approval. So for this presentation, I think it's really important to discuss the, the need. I mean, we all hear about what's the need for affordable housing. But these are some interesting statistics that came out of a recent project eligibility letter that was issued by MHP for the Falmouth Housing Corporation. And this project is targeting sale, it's a sales project of three-bedroom homes and will be available for residents earning up to eighty percent of the area median income. So the most significant statistic there is that fifty percent of the residents from this census data of our community earn less than eighty percent of the area median income. Fifty percent of our residents. The eighty percent area median income for a six-person household is eighty thousand dollars. So again, fifty percent of our residents earn less than eighty thousand dollars a year. That's a pretty significant statistic. Oops. We have, according to Mass Housing Partnership, a deficit of a thousand and five housing units affordable to fifty percent of AMI or below. And seven hundred and sixty households are severely cost burdened, meaning they spend more than fifty percent of their income on housing. The local initiative program, the LIP project benefits. These projects create affordable housing without use of public funds. The reason for that is that with the technical assistance that's offered by DHCD for the budget review, cost certification, auditing, plan review, that's considered the subsidy under the Affordable Housing Regulations so that a developer is not, does not need public funds, does not need grant financing, CPC financing, state funding to develop a project. The developer simply goes to his or her local bank and gets mortgage financing. And that, I would submit, is a huge benefit because it allows for those funds to be allocated elsewhere. There's an increased town participation in the creation of the affordable housing units. The town is entitled to review of the budget for these projects. With a forty B housing project that is approved through Mass Housing, the town does not get to see the budget and the Board of Appeals does not get to see the budget because the Supreme Judicial Court has indicated that that information is for the subsidizing agency only. So the benefit of the LIP project is that you get to see what the costs are. You get to see what the sales are projected at. And so if the town wants to try and impose conditions on the project and a developer says those are uneconomic or it's not affordable, you can see why. You can see that that is the case or not the case. This is the project site off of Locust Field Road. It's highlighted here in yellow. It's fairly close to the high school. This is the concept plan for the project. So we're looking at twelve single-family, three-bedroom housing units. There would be three affordables that would be sold at about a hundred and ninety-five thousand. Lots two, three, and five would be the designated affordables, and I'll show you those. The lots to the, I guess it would be north and south, there are fairly long lot lines. Again, the developer has talked with the abutters there. The plan is to develop buffers to those, to those other properties through fencing, preservation of natural vegetation, and landscape. Again, this is not a permitting process. That would be something that would be reviewed in detail by the Zoning Board of Appeals to determine the adequacy of those buffers in conjunction with specific comments from abutters who appear at the hearing. This is a roadway that's divine, designed to subdivision standards. We have a portion of the property in the rear, which is in dark green, which would be preserved as open space area. That's about thirty-three percent of the overall property. So what you have here really is the creation of a neighborhood. These are relatively small homes. They would all look the same. They would all have a garage. They would all have a traditional Cape Cod architecture. These are some elevation plans and the sides. These are the floor plans. We have a master bedroom on the first floor, living room, kitchen area, bathroom and a half bath as well. And the second floor, two bedrooms and a full bathroom. All the homes, and there is an unfinished basement as well. So all the homes would be of the style that's required for an, for an affordable housing development where there's no distinction between the affordable houses and the market rates. This is a typical site plan showing a market rate home on Lot One. So you can see the layout on the, on the lot itself. The, all of these lots are, are, the lot coverage for the structure is somewhere between twenty and twenty-five percent. The zoning board under zoning can allow up to twenty-five percent by special permit. So there really isn't any huge discrepancy there in terms of how much of the lot is covered. This is a, the, one of the affordable homes on Lot Two, just showing you the site plan. Each, each lot is proposed to have its own separate Title V septic system. This is another affordable home on Lot Three. And this is an affordable home on Lot Five. And then some more market rate samples here, Lot Six, Lot Seven, and Lot Eight, just really to give you an idea of the similarity in size of the lots and the layout of each of the houses. And this is Lot Eleven. So we have four point oh nine acres in total. Area of the lots is two point oh seven acres and the area of the open space is thirty-one point one percent. And we are looking at providing a bus stop at the roadway entrance for children. Each home has nineteen hundred and forty-eight total square feet, eight hundred and forty-eight on the first floor and seven hundred and fifty on the second floor. We're looking at projected sales prices of one hundred and ninety-five thousand for the affordable three-bedrooms, four hundred to four twenty-five for the market rate units. All homes, three bedrooms, two point five baths, kitchen, living, dining area, outdoor deck, space, garage, private septic, municipal water, gas and electric. All homes have, will have Energy Star appliances and heating system, low-e insulated windows, drought tolerant, environmentally friendly plantings. Lot coverage, as I said, is by structure up to twenty-one point five percent, which is allowable by special permit under regular zoning bylaw. Seventeen to twenty-five percent, twenty-five and a half percent by structures, pavement and parking. The allowed is forty percent in this district. So those elements meet zoning. We, we meet the Massachusetts Sustainable Development Principles, which are important for DHCD reviewing these projects. The development is compact, meaning that it's a cluster-type subdivision where the homes are clustered as close together as possible so that open space land can be preserved. This open space area is in an ever-source easement area, but that doesn't mean it couldn't be cleared. So the project will, through the permit conditions, preserve that open space. Utilizing existing roads and water, recreational opportunities nearby, expands the housing opportunities, provides new housing choices, and energy-efficient construction. We have project support from the Affordable Housing Committee endorsement. They were impressed by the home design, the community setting of the project, that there was no distinction between the affordable or market homes. They liked the master bedroom on the bath on the first floor as well. Falmouth Housing Trust wrote you a letter as well. They stressed the need for homes for sale, workforce housing, looking to leave rentals for homeownership. The benefits of homeownership in neighborhoods and the benefits of LIP projects overall were discussed in their letter. You did, I think, also receive a couple of letters, one from Peter and one from the town planner. I think that in review of this project, it's important to remember that your standard of review really is under the Affordable Housing Action Plan that you adopted in two thousand and nine. There are some draft plans in the works. Those have not really, I think, been fully vetted publicly. They certainly haven't even been adopted yet by this board or the planning board or the state. And I think that will take some time to do. So under the two thousand and nine plan, it was recommended that there be seventy-nine affordable housing units created each year to meet your target goals. Of those seventy-nine units, it was recommended that forty percent be sales. So that's about thirty units of affordable sales per year. I can tell you that I don't think we're anywhere near that. And I can't even think of a project that was, has been approved this year that's a sales project. The Housing Corporation has done a wonderful job and others in producing rentals. And rentals are important. Under the two thousand and nine Affordable Housing Action Plan that you adopted, they wanted, they recommended sixty percent rentals, forty percent sales. Recognizing in that plan that Falmouth has a population between the age of twenty and forty-five that is leaving the community. They cannot afford to buy homes here. And it was part of that action plan that the town engage in projects like the local initiative program to develop these, say, for-sale projects in neighborhoods and create neighborhoods and create a sense of homeownership. So I mentioned that just because, you know, the town planner had made a number of comments in his letter about this project not meeting certain LIP guidelines. I, I think that perhaps with, with more information, he might have thought differently. I think that the current guideline for you is the current Affordable Housing Action Plan. The LIP guidelines are guidelines for review of the project, things to look for when looking for public benefit. But your guidelines in looking at developing affordable housing is the action plan. There is DHCD review of the cost certification. There's an auditing process. So he had mentioned that there's no MHP or Mass Housing review here, but we do have DHCD review of that process. We are creating what's so-called workforce housing with this project. The market rate units, as Peter pointed out in his comments to you, are still within reach of many hundred and twenty percent income, hundred and ten percent income individuals in the community. And by nature of the location and the size of the home, they will remain affordable for, as workforce housing, even though they are market rate units. There are positive contributions to the environment in keeping with the Affordable Housing Action Plan, the cluster development, preservation of the open space. The project typically will offer a seventy percent lottery pool, meaning a seventy percent local preference for the affordable homes. So what that means, in the lottery process, there's two pools. There's a seventy percent pool and then there's a general pool. Falmouth residents get to go in both pools. So that's a typical condition as part of the project. These types of projects free up rentals for others to move into them. It's the next step. We have the first floor masters. We have the recreational amenities. So the public benefit under the LIP guidelines is supposed to be determined by the Board of Selectmen and the Affordable Housing Committee. The Affordable Housing Committee has given you a letter with their endorsement illustrating their view of the public benefit. As far as a couple of additional matters, the developer can make one of the affordable units handicapped accessible and one of the units handicap visitable. So that, again, that, those would be conditions that would be offered at the Board of Appeals to the permit. to the permit. The drainage will be controlled on site through gutters, downspouts, dry wells on the property. So, and the road is designed to subdivision standards for the water to flow through the drainage system within the roadway. So we would like to leave the proposal with the paved driveways. As far as one suggestion about adding a duplex to the site, the difficulty with that is that now you're going to be increasing density for the development. Because if you add two market rate units, you must add another affordable unit. So to get a duplex in, you gotta add more units overall, three more units. The duplexes are more expensive to build. And when you run the numbers on them, you're not going to get the revenue out of the duplex to cover the cost of the additional affordable unit. So there's actually would be a loss to the project. If you did multiple duplexes, it'd be different. But here, when we run the numbers, because what, what, what revenue you get from the duplexes and the fact that they're more costly to build and you'd have to build an additional affordable unit to have that additional market rate unit, the numbers don't work to be able to do that. But at the same time, we think this really is a very well-designed, relatively low-density, single-family neighborhood. That's what we're trying to create. The developer is here, Dan McCrone. He lives in Falmouth. He works in the construction trade. He talks to people all the time who he, who work for him or he works with, that they can't afford to buy a house in Falmouth. This is why he brought this project forward, to try and do something good for the community. We all have examples of young professionals. Mr. Vorselli lost his assistant recently because he couldn't afford to live in Falmouth. So it's a crisis. And I, and I know I've gone on longer than I probably should have, but I think it is really important to give you that, those numbers, to understand, you know, what is going on with the income taken by the census. And, and we all talk about affordable housing, but it's a real, the need is real. You know, it's, it's time, even if it's one house at a time, let's create one house at a time. You know, we can sit around and make policy all we want, but we need to, we need to be encouraging developers like Mr. McCrone to come forward with LIP projects that the town can oversee and have nice neighborhoods developed from them in order to meet this crisis.
Great presentation. Thank you. I'd like to hear from Ms. Feroni and then do you mind questions at the end? If that's okay? Ms. Feroni, do you just want to let us know about the recommendation that was made? And then Peter, if you'd just go over the dueling recommendations from planning?
Sure. So, so you're asking Carla Feroni to speak more to that Affordable Housing Committee recommendation?
Exactly.
Thank you. The Affordable Housing Committee did hear the presentation from Mr. McCrone a couple of months ago, and they were very much in support of this development, looking at the affordability and the size of the units. The master bedrooms on the first floor, which is becoming a greater need as the population here ages. For me, looking at it from the Affordable Housing Coordinator position, I think that while Attorney Moynihan mentioned that there are housing production plans in process that we're updating, they've gone through two community forums and there's been a lot of data generated. The newer data suggests that eighty-five percent of the need is for rentals. There still exists a need, however, for single-family units and single-family units for growing families and also for starter homes. So there is, there is a need for that. With this particular development, we see that we're getting the minimum amount of affordable units required per the comprehensive permit. You know, it would be nice to, to see that increased a bit if that were at all possible. But, you know, we do think it's, it meets some of the needs of the affordable criteria we have being developed now for the town.
Thank you. Very helpful. Peter, if you'd just give an overview of the dueling recommendations?
Sure. And, and they're fairly detailed and I won't, I won't go through them point by point. So we had a robust, I think it's fair to say we had a robust staff discussion of the proposal. And the town planner, Tom Bott, at, at the end of the day, felt that the, the proposal is not significantly better than what we might get from a traditional forty B application process and therefore perhaps does not merit the Board of Selectmen endorsement as a LIP, as a so-called friendly forty B. And he pointed to things such as, you know, not, not going above the minimum twenty-five percent affordable, not having a mix of units. Let's see, what are some of the, the, the fact that they're all three bedrooms, so there isn't a mix of different housing types? My, my analysis, my, and the difference between our conclusions is, is somewhat one of judgment and somewhat one of what do we think is going to happen with the market rate units? We, you know, the, the term workforce housing has been thrown out and it's, it's a fuzzy term. It doesn't have an explicit meaning. The idea is these are people who don't meet legal requirements for affordability under any of the sort of statutory guidelines, but meet a need of folks who are being priced out of the market. And, and my assessment, as Laura described, is that because of the combination of the fact that these units are small, they're sixteen hundred square feet, and the budgets are scrutinized by the Department of Housing and Community Development, that there is a higher likelihood that those market rate units are going to meet a need than we might get under a traditional forty B path. So again, the question is, does the project merit endorsement of the Board of Selectmen? And part of that analysis is, what do we think is going to happen to this property if the board does not endorse it? And in my analysis, I, you know, I, I agree with Laura's assessment that we're, you know, we're on the verge of a crisis and we really need affordable housing quickly. You know, could we, you know, could we quibble and ask that this proposal be a little different and a little better? Sure. Do I, but do I think that it's going to be, that the outcome in the near future or even the distant future is going to be better if the board does not endorse the project? And, and my feeling is that that's not the case, whether the property owner chooses to go a traditional forty B route or abandon affordable housing altogether and, and just put one large home on it. I, I see an acute need for affordable housing. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, this is, the density is, is high. So that's, that's not going to be viewed favorably by people in the neighborhood, I'm sure. It's, it's quite a dense development. And that's, you know, that's, that's going to be difficult for people who live in that neighborhood. However, we do have an incredibly urgent need for affordable housing and we have very limited land to put it on. So the fact that it is dense from an affordable housing standpoint is an attribute.
Doug?
I would be much more inclined to support this application if it had more than twenty-five percent, which is the bare minimum. We're asking every other developer to come in to do better than that. And for us, as the town to support something that's not doing better, that worries me. I'd also can, would hope that this project could look into doing some innovative alternative septic system, or at least some kind of nitrogen reduction systems on these. Again, this is a chance that we can step in and we would certainly hope other developers would look at doing that. And if we're involved in this as a supportive LIP, I would hope that we would also be saying, we believe in enough that we're going to ask our developer who we're partnering with to do that too.
I, I think those are laudable. I, in, and certainly should, are important goals. I just am kind of burdened in that weighing by the fact that I hear time and time again from developers that they just don't even want to work in Falmouth because of the restrictions that we place on them. And so it's, that's, that's a challenge. Does that mean we abandon our goals? Of course not. It's just something that I, I struggle with in terms of the need for affordable housing and what comes to us as proposals. Megan?
I mean, I, I hear both those things, but I do think every single time we sort of have a project that comes, it's like we're, and I understand we're in a crisis point. And so out of desperation, it's, our answer always seems to be, we'll take whatever we can get. And I understand that there's, you know, a piece of that that is a practical piece because we're so, we're so short for where we need to be. But I think if we don't start pushing somewhere, we're always going to continuously, we're just never, you know, at three, three houses here and two units here and fourteen units here, I don't know that we're ever going to get to that place. So, you know, I, I hear, you know, that, that struggle between wanting to make projects viable so that developers will actually come forward and work and, and create, you know, houses don't build themselves. We need people who are going to do it. It has to be profitable or else they're not, nobody does this, you know. Private developers don't do this for just the benefit of the goodwill that it, it engenders. But I, I, you know, I do hear, take Doug's point that, you know, are there ways that we can push a little bit more for our community so that, so that there is some, a better benefit, a greater benefit?
Doug?
Yeah, I don't see really any difference from any other forty B. What would be, what would be different if it was just a standard forty B? How, how is there more of a community benefit with this project other than we get some housing that we need?
Well, Attorney Moynihan may want to address that question, but the, you know, the, the point that I would lead with is, again, it comes down, a lot of it comes down to what do we think the market rate houses are going to look like under this proposal versus traditional forty B? I, I think the, the pricing could be substantially higher and less regulated, the market rate units, under a, under a traditional forty B where the developer isn't making a concerted effort because he's a community member, because he is proposing really small houses, because he's seeking to meet a workforce housing need.
If I may, could I just add that? And that's exactly the point. And, and we've gone over and over on this, what is the benefit? What is the public benefit? The public benefit is that you get to see, you, you can see what the costs are of this project. All of those costs have to be certified at the end of the day by DHCD and reported back to the town. So you have oversight, the financial oversight of the project. With a mass housing project, you really don't. And the density here is three units per acre. And that actually is quite low. I mean, the recommended density in the last Affordable Housing Task Force Plan that was posted was six units outside of village centers. In the, all the years that I've done affordable housing permitting, we've applied that six units per acre outside of village centers. So here we're at three units per acre. So, but the issue is that for this kind of project, if you look at the budget, you see the, the projected rate of return for this project as proposed at twelve units is ten percent. Now that always goes down after the project is built out because costs increase over the construction. So if this developer ends up at about seven or eight percent, he's done probably the best he could do. You're not going to get a developer to come forward with twelve units, three units per acre, and get with, with a lower rate of return than that on a projected budget. So the only way to increase the density on this kind of property is to maximize the number of market rate units. That means six units per acre, you're talking about twenty-four units. So this gentleman did not want to do that. He wanted to create a nice neighborhood that had a relatively, you know, three units per acre is a good density. It's a nice neighborhood. If you say no to him and we want more, all you're saying to him and other developers is, don't bother coming forward with a nice LIP project. Just go to mass housing, maximize your density, and we don't care how, what you sell the market rate units for. That's, that's the benefit of the LIP process is you get that oversight in it. So yes, here you might want to see another affordable unit, but it's, if you look at the budget, he can't do it with twelve units. He'd have to increase his market rate units.
Could I suggest a different terminology? The affordable units, the three affordable units are the ones that are legally defined as affordable units. And I guess what I'm now understanding is these other nine are, aren't affordable units because they're not defined that way, but they're designed to be...
Sort of affordable.
I mean reasonably priced ones, not high-end priced ones.
Workforce housing, whatever the term.
They're reachable.
Middle-class housing.
Yeah, reachable units. So they're not, they're not formally restricted, but the market, the size of the dwelling itself and the market naturally restricts them because they have a cap for what they can be sold for, given their size and location. They're not near a beach, they're, you know, they don't have water views, things like that. So, so again, you know, when the developer comes forward, I, I totally appreciate your point. And, you know, if you look at the LIP guidelines, it's, projects that offer more affordable units will be looked at more favorably. But you have to keep in mind, if you're asking for that, you got to look at the budget because the developer is going to have to build more market rate units to give you more affordable units. So it's a balance between the number of houses overall and the number of affordable units. That's why we brought this project as a LIP approval because it's a low density, it's creating a neighborhood, it does fit within the guidelines. There is public benefit.
Any chance of the septic innovative alternative septic system?
Again, the alternative septic system. So why are we asking for that? In, in, in reality, if, you know, we, we know where the sensitive area is around Long Pond, we know that that's the environmentally sensitive area. There's a DEP threshold, I think it's two thousand feet around Long Pond. We just went through this with the Gifford Street Housing Project where D-Nite Systems were, was not required because we gave the Board of Appeals credible evidence, I think, that there was no adverse impact to Long Pond from that development. So here, asking for the D-Nite System is going to add a pretty significant cost to this project. And you look at the budget, it's not there. So we, it's all about the budget. When, when these things are requested and with the benefit of the LIP approval, you have the benefit of the budget.
Doug? And then Sam?
So when you mentioned the low density, isn't that whole green area unbuildable?
It's, it's the easement area, but it doesn't mean that you can't squish more units in here. Right, right now, those lots are around sixty-five hundred to ten thousand square feet. If you want more density, th- those lots can be brought down even further.
Quiet in the back.
You know, that's, that's the whole point, is you can increase the density on this property without touching the open space area still. So, you know, we have abutters on both sides. We're trying to respect them and, and their interests by keeping the density low. And we're trying to create a good, pretty good size, decent size housing lot here with the twelve units. But that could be cut down. And twenty-four units could be put on that property, which is what, if somebody goes to mass housing, they're going to max out the density. That's what I tell people when they come and see me. I'm like, the recommended density by the town is six units outside, per acre, outside the village centers. And now with the new plan, we're looking at higher density. So the LIP projects traditionally are lower-density projects.
Sam?
Yes, I really quite agree with Laura and I'm thinking about the people that live in that general area and how compatible they consider this development to be with their lot sizes and housing sizes. And I think when you look at the Cape Cod Commission's Regional Policy Plan, they're not talking about large densities in this kind of an area. They're talking about in those community centers where you've got active commercial activity, you know? And so that's the place where I think we want multi-housing units. And, and looking at this, you know, this is far enough away from our natural resources or, that really you're going to get quite a, quite a loss of any nitrogen because of the distance that the aquifer has to travel before it gets into a place like Long Pond or Little Pond or Great Pond. So this is well enough away so that maybe the typical Title V system is going to be all right. It's, the contribution is going to be pretty small to our estuaries or to our, our freshwater supply. Let's see, and there was, let's make one other point.
On behalf of the contribution of a twenty-four unit.
Right.
Well, and that's right. Oh, and that, and the other thing to keep in mind is that innovative alternative septic system have a year in, year out maintenance that gets passed on to the homeowner. And that's just going to, you know, cut away at living within the thirty... And that's just gonna, you know, cut away at living within thirty percent of your earned income that you have to use to contribute toward your housing. And so I, I can tell you that I haven't heard anybody really suggest that if you're trying to do any kind of affordable housing, that you can justify innovative a, 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 alternative septic systems at this point because of those cost issues. Uh, it's because of that ongoing maintenance that it becomes an issue even after you look at the, at the capital cut. I think there's another point too that was made by Laura, and since I'm sitting on the working group for the Affordable Housing Fund, you know, we're not being required to contribute any subsidy to this development. And we could get three affordable units out of it. So I think that's an important thing to recognize, is that, that, that is a contribution. We're getting some affordable units without us having to subsidize those units or to get in line for years to wait for DHCD to, to, to provide tax credits to the developer, which has been happening.
What about saying we could get another affordable unit by making it, by subsidizing it? I mean, if it's all down to the budget and we subsidize one more unit, that's one way we could get one more unit. The budget could work out better. We're in a crisis right now. Is there a way that we could, as being sponsors at LIP, saying, hey, we can, we have some affordable housing funds. We may be able to contribute to it, to make it work for four.
From my perspective, what's more acceptable to the town is they have the multifamily units in the community centers.
Okay.
Not to put it out in the residential rural-oriented areas.
He's not talking.
And, and so that's where I think we should be pushing for density and not trying to push it into neighborhoods where people really are a little offended by the fact that you're shoving, you know, more dense units right next to their subdivision that enjoys a little bit more lot sizes and more bedrooms, if you will.
Well, I was saying, I would stick with the exact same size, just instead of three-nine, you go four-eight.
Well, the CPC awarded sixty-five thousand to the Falmouth Housing Trust for a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home. I mean, I was quite surprised that it was only sixty-five thousand. I mean, certainly I think any developer that, that is coming forward, you know, is happy to take subsidies, but I'm not sure that they're that easy to get, to, to build a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home, which that example kind of, you know, illustrates.
I, I did have one benefit that we might have. You indicated that you'd be open to providing accessible accommodations. And I, I would like to see us, I, I guess the, the one thing, in looking at the plans, your floor plans, it seemed like a, a ramp and then perhaps enlarging the door widths a bit. But it looks like the design is such that you could probably make them accessible without a lot of investment. And, and I'd like to see us, you know, I'd like to see, I'd like to have you consider actually providing us with, you know, two, if not three, accessible units, which of course are automatically visitable. But, you know, people who live in wheelchairs, and I've worked with a lot of them when I drove the B buses here on Cape Cod, have difficult times finding a place where there is a master bedroom and a bath on the first floor and can get in and out of those facilities, wheeling their chairs around, which are not necessarily small and are quite heavy. And I guess my question to you would be, if you're willing to make these accessible, one or two accessible, how much is it, of, how much of a modification is, and how much of a cost increase would that be? Or is that something you could accommodate on more than just, you know, one unit?
Well, Mr. McLean, we talked about this earlier. He, he said he can commit to one affordable unit being handicapped accessible. So that means modifying the access in the garage um through a ramp system, an interior ramp system coming in, and then the first floor being handicapped accessible, and an additional unit as being handicapped visitable. As far as the market rate units, I mean typically those terminologies apply to the affordable units because those, those are the issues with affordability is with a handicapped person not being able to afford changes to the construction. So um, you know, normally when, even with the rentals, um, you know, there's, the, the, the accessibility is limited to the affordable units, but he is willing to certainly work through that.
I, I think, given the hour, I wanna give folks in the audience a chance to comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wanted to speak, sir?
Madam Chair, members of the board, I appreciate the, the time to speak. Scott Zalinski from East Falmouth. Um, while I have the utmost respect for Mr. Baselli and Attorney Moynihan, what they failed to, to say to you folks in their presentation was, "This project will cut one of the last pieces of contiguous AGA property directly in half and set a precedence." Now, we talk about future generations and environmental impact and historical resources. What is AGA property, agricultural property, if it's not a historical resource? You guys are just giving it away. You talk about, you, you, you guys are sitting up there talking about people that aren't even here yet. What about the people that built this town? And all the people, people lost their minds when they tore my grandmother's house down over those two trees, right? What happens when there's no more farms? You know, everybody wants to feel good. Well, what about the people that built this town? We're gonna take our kids to, 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 to the zoo to see a horse or a cow or a goat? No, let's fill it up to its capacity, right? And I'm no, I know that I'm gonna be uh deemed as, you know, throw, throw tomatoes at me because it's not in my backyard. My family has farmed animals here for seventy-five years. I didn't bring a whole pack of people in here with, with, with torches and pitchforks to play that game because I sat on that side of the bench. I was on the windmill thing. It doesn't do anybody any good. I just want you folks to consider us in this too. And consider our children and our future generations of farmers who were here. Cranberry farmers, livestock farmers. You guys just bought Jeff Andrews' property. Why don't you put one up there? Why don't you do something with the stuff across from Cumberland Farms that nobody even uses? The three-hundred committee will, will give you some of that and put some up, right? These guys keep talking. I've heard this same song and dance from every forty-B application that I sat on. If you don't do this, we're gonna do that. Well, I'm asking you to show some integrity to the rest of us and fight that issue. I'm not saying it's not a good, it's not a good policy, it's not a good program. But once we start giving away our agricultural property, it'll set a precedence and it'll be gone. I tried to speak on this at the meeting for, for affordable housing. They took a big picture of me, said I made a statement, but they didn't put one bit of the content of my, my concerns or everybody else's concern in the farming community. You were there. You were there. You told me this can't happen. We, we got no way to fight it, didn't you? Yeah. Is that how you really feel? Why even go through this if, if we have no, I'm asking him a question, Chair.
You're, you're not allowed to ask him questions. You must.
I'm ask, can I ask him through the, through the chair?
Yes.
What'd you say to me?
So the.
What'd you say to me, sir?
It's private land and we can't control it.
So why even do this? If she, she just got up here and told you that if you, if you don't give her what she wants, they're just gonna go for a regular forty-B and it takes anything out of your hands. That's the argument with every forty-B.
It would be a little more straightforward if there was, and this is just a complete hypothetical, if there was someone who wanted to buy and farm that property.
The integrity of the integral pieces isn't, is that question though, isn't it? It's one of the last largest piece of integral AG property in this town, and you're gonna cut it right in half. I just want you to consider that. You guys are gonna do what you're gonna do anyway.
It's, it's a very important point to be made, and we certainly appreciate you.
We don't have a voice. You know what I mean? We, the, the farmers here really don't have a voice. We went to the, we went to the, uh, the ag committee. Next thing you know, the town planist got his head in the door handing cards out. I couldn't even get my point across. So, we're very emotional about this because I want my kids and my grandkids to have some place to farm. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Doug?
Just, I don't understand how we would possibly stop a private project. I mean.
It, your point is well-taken as well. It, it's more of a, you know, sort, sort of something that should, everyone should be thinking about.
Well, and I think it's what Mr. Zalinski's made a good point, that we can't possibly apply draft policies to this project because, you know, he, he has an opinion about the draft plan. It's gonna come before your board. We have to look at what's in place now. Sam?
Yeah. I sympathize with what you're saying. And I think in Europe, they were a heck of a lot smarter because they realized they needed farmlands in order to be able to grow the food and, and the, and the livestock that they needed to support the population. We've blown that apart. There is just no way that you can feed the people on Cape Cod right now with the farms that are available. So I see us.
The agricultural food.
Sir, I'm sorry.
We have horses.
Thank, oh, thank you.
The bottom line is that.
We've gotta use the mic.
That some, the bottom line is that, I'm sorry, but somebody owns this property. You know, it's going to be developed somehow. So, I mean, that may be unfortunate from Mr. Zalinski's point of view, but we can't control private property. We can only control it to a certain extent.
Thank you. Mr. Bento, next?
Uh, my name is Joe Bento. I am in a butter to this property. I'm all aware that there's nothing that can be done here. This forty-B has gone overboard. Uh, maybe the suggestion, rather than do fortyBs, is to get more business into the town of Falmouth so the people who are living here can make more money and afford the housing that's here. Why did this housing in Falmouth become so expensive? Good question.
There is, there is a good answer for it.
Right. The second thing, I believe one of you gentlemen, and I couldn't see back there, I'm not that tall of a guy, so. Somebody mentioned about Long Pond and everything. There's Mayor's Pond right across the street from this development. No more than probably, I don't know, a, an eighth, a, an eighth of a mile, if that. So there is, I mean, it may not be a major pond, but it's still a pond that can be, you know, can probably get something, some of the nitrogen could get into it. So that has to be. My other concern is that you're gonna have twelve houses. How much parking space is allowed for each house?
Well, we'll ask the attorney that if your point's made. That's a good question.
You're gonna have a husband and wife, two cars, two cars on the property. So you're gonna have over twenty-four cars in this area coming in and out. What about when the garbage trucks go down into that area? How do they turn around? Okay? And, and the grin, like the idea that that green part there, yeah, that's, that's, that's property that can't be built. I, I can't conceive it as being a, I forget the term now, forgive me, but uh, as being open space. It's restricted space, not open. So it, it's just too many variables. But again, the fact of the matter is, there's not a damn thing you people can do about it. And it's just a shame. It really is. Again, the town should've spent more time in getting business in here, rather than getting affordable housing. Because if they had decent business, people can afford the housing. And that's it. Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bento. It, it's often an argument, sort of chicken and egg, you know, to, for folks to come, you know, should you have the housing so that the businesses can thrive and, and have, you know, people to work in the business? They need homes. So it's a good point that you make. Ms. Moynihan, would you answer the question Mr. Bento posed with respect to parking, for example?
Um, yes. So there's parking in the driveways and for each home, and then the one-car garage. So under the zoning bylaw, the garage counts as a parking space. Most of the driveways, you can correct me, are sk- are set up for two cars in the driveway. You also have the subdivision road, which is set up with shoulders. So it's possible that the Board of Appeals, sometimes they look at those areas and ask us to shell those so that there can be additional parking. As far as the garbage truck goes, um, this was, you know, reviewed by the fire department. The town planner looked at it as well. Um, the, the T is suitable for turnarounds. Um, the engineering department looked at the access point um, um, off of Locust Field Road. Didn't have any issues with that. So we have done a lot of due diligence vetting this project with town officials, which is really how you have to, to do these LIP projects because the developer spends a tremendous amount of money to get to the point where he develops the application for you. So there, there has to be a lot of confidence in the project. I can honestly say that I haven't felt that with this particular project as we have in the past. And I think that's just because of, there's a lot of changes going on in the community about, you know, what types of affordable housing that we should be building. But aside from all of that, he has gone to great lengths to vet this project before he brings it to you. Because, you know, we obviously want your endorsement. We wanna move forward. We wanna be able to go to DHCD with your endorsement and get this approved so we can get to the Board of Appeals and get the permits and build the three houses.
Thank, thank you. I wanna see if there's anyone else in the audience who, ma'am? And sir, if you'd come up right after her, given the late hour, I just wanna um try to hear from everyone who wants to speak. Welcome in.
I'm Mary Jane Marston. I'm one of the butters. And I find this very upsetting because the whole area are lodge lots. It's, it's quiet. We have um a horse. We have um, I'm just real nervous about doing.
That's okay. Take your time.
So it's been really quiet, and the concern that, that this project is going, they talk about the land out back that's open space. They keep saying three houses per acre, but it's really. Six houses per acre because he's only actually building on half of those four acres because the land they can't build on with the power company and the road and all of that stuff, you know. The house lots are really little. And he's going to, the, the depth of those lots, we're going to have seven backyards all along one side of our property. And the concerns are, are there animals gonna come over or are there dogs and bother our horse? A lot of people keep their um yard clippings or trash and a lot, the last, one of the last part of our property before the um end star easement is still somewhat wooded because we ride our horses through that path and out around town that way. And so the concerns is, are these people gonna put their yard clippings or their trash trespass through uh properties? What's it gonna look like back there? We can't, we can't see it, so it's, it's a little disconcerting there. It's gonna be, you know, really impact our lifestyle. We've been there for twenty-plus years. And when we bought the property, all those lots were lodge lots, they were single-family homes. And so we were on one side and Mr. Bento's on the other side. But um, sleepless nights, disconcern, you know, over, over the whole thing. And the drawing he has is not really accurate. And when you look at Locust Field Road, it, it, the road is very curvy through there. We have tons of traffic, tons of kids. There's no sidewalks on Locust Field. It's gonna increase the traffic. There's a school bus stop across the street. Um, I have to look both ways going to the mailbox. I don't know. I felt like there was one more point I wanted to make, but I.
Well, if you think of more, we always take comments after, you know, via email to the selectmen. So if you think of more that you meant to say. I know it's hard to get up sometimes and remember everything.
It is. I've never done this before.
Mm-hmm.
Bill Marston, uh, a butter. And uh, Joe and I actually talked about buying the land when it went up for sale, but it was zoned for one house. So when it's zoned for one house and you'd have to, to buy it and split it at, you know, a hundred and something thousand dollars a piece, it's not gonna add the value to the house. And we're not at the age of investments to, you know, make bad investments and that. I'm, you know, this is even worse because it's gonna lower the value of our house, and we're getting nothing. The, you know, it, and that's what it was. If, you know, if it was available again, sure, we'd buy it. Either develop, sell one house. We always figured one house would be there. It was just, where was it gonna be on the lot? It was just, where was it going to be on the lot? So, then when it was sold, and I saw them surveying it, and I asked them, you know, what, you know, I was sold. Okay. Then I saw some other guys, and they were in the middle of it, surveying, putting in stakes. And I spoke with somebody else, and I said, "Oh, they're staking it for a road." I said, "What do you mean a road?" And they told me, "Yeah, it's a road with a bunch of little houses." I said, "How the hell are they going to do that?" And so, then I called Mr. Klum and asked him what was going on. Oh, no, they came in and cleared the road. And I called and I asked him, and he told me, "Oh, I'm putting in a one, I've got a permit for one, a single-family house. That's what I'm putting in. But you worked off the plan." And so, he's been working on it, you know, and we've been going through this. And my poor wife has been very upset. All of us have. But that's just kind of where we're all coming at on this. And like they say, you know, I've been clearing out back. I've got a good horse. And I've been clearing out back to put in steers so I can work my, it's a Western Roop horse, so I can work him on them. Now, you know, if I go ahead and put in steers and more livestock and whatever, and you have seven people move in and start whining and crying because they moved into an agriculture area, is it my fault? Am I, I've got, I don't have too many years left to do this. And so, you put a bunch of people in on, you know, they said 6,500. I saw the smaller slot was 5,000. So, they're stomped right in there. And now, if their dogs are over crippling my horse or something, what am I going to do? Who's going to pay for that? Not him. He's going to be gone, going to be happily out of there. So, that's what we're up against. Take them.
Thank you. Is there, are there any more questions from the board? What is the fourth pleasure?
I have one last question. Why isn't ZBA not planning board for new subdivision?
Because it would be a comprehensive permit under 40B.
Oh, right.
So, the zoning board.
Okay.
And if I have the mic in 10 seconds, I'd like to just clarify this open space issue.
10 seconds.
Okay. If you look at the plan, Eversource does allow backyards in the easement area. They allow roadways in the easement area. They allow parking in the easement area. You've probably seen, as we have many plans, where subdivision lots incorporate the easement area into the back of a lot, which can all be cleared. The whole site can be cleared of vegetation. So, there is a benefit of the way this is designed to protect that easement area, which would be protected under a condition. That roadway could go right into it and could be the turnaround. Somebody's backyard could go right up to the far side of the lot, and they could clear it. So, you know, I just wanted to clarify that. It is a benefit the way it's designed.
Okay. Thank you. So, is anyone prepared to make a motion?
I would ask that we make this vote on future meeting. Just because we have said that people want to make presentations, emails to the board to invite the emails after we've made our decision.
I had that thought when she moved to...
Yeah. I mean, only because we have four folks here tonight. It's obviously, and I'm sympathetic, I mean, when you live in a place and you love it and, you know, you've envisioned it being a certain way, it's very upsetting, you know, to see that potentially change. So, you know, I don't know if there are other folks who would want to make a comment, but I think the important thing is, you know, we recognize this is a private, this is privately owned, something's going to go there. You're correct, Mr. Zalinski or Mr. Bento, actually, I think said it, you know, something's going to go there, and we can either have it sort of be a development. I know that it's not favorable to some folks, but that's less dense than some other possible options. But I think, you know, for the goodwill of whatever happens there, to have an opportunity for there to be even just at one more meeting, you know, additional comments before that, and then we vote on it. You know, everybody's going to be living next to each other in some capacity. So, I think it would be nice to hear that input.
I think I'd like to suggest that we move this to our next meeting, which will mean there is a week for comments. As always, please email the Board of Selectmen. The staff will acknowledge the emails and will collect them so that we have an organized source of information for comment and in addition to the comments that we've already had today. Thank you for your suggestion. Mr. Jones? Sam?
Can I suggest that we restrict it to the written comments only? Just because we could end up with something like the 28 road widening if we just opened it up entirely. So, I'd much rather diligently go through comments that are submitted to us in writing. I take them seriously. We can even summarize them. But I feel like we're not going to get anywhere by having just another open session where people, you know, come in and spout off and posture and use a lot of hyperbole when it's tough to sort it all out and make some sort of a critical thinking type of decision.
I think that I'm fine with managing the meeting with a limited amount of public comment when, if people come. Some folks just feel more, they're not writers, they're more speakers.
Some people don't email.
So, I appreciate writing, and some who just don't have email capacity. I appreciate what you're saying. So, I think it's good to put structure to it.
We use snail mail.
But we will give a week for comment. In which case, we're on to our next item, which would be minutes of meetings.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Moynihan. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Vercelli, appreciate your comment. Any thoughts on minutes of meetings?
I didn't have any significant, so I'd move approval of the minutes from October 1st.
Second?
No, there's, there are corrections that need to be made because there are article numbers that are missing.
Okay. Peter, you got these changes for a minute? Sam's about to request a couple.
I can write them down if that's what you're asking.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. And I'll need some consensus on some of it. Well, first of all, let me, before I get into the articles, on page two, under the business number one, I'll...
Last you.
And I'll provide these to you, Peter, so you can just...
So, we'll probably do this next week, but you'll take the...
I'll give these to you, and you can look at the corrections I'm suggesting to.
I'm sorry.
And it includes page three. But while we're together, if you turn to page five, it said, Miss English, very first line, "Motion indefinite postponement with no reference to which article." I'm assuming it's really recommending a indefinite postponement of Article 12. But I had to go back through the warrant book to try to figure out which article it was. So, I don't know. Megan, maybe you can recall that, and we can get that squared.
You're putting a lot of confidence in me if you think I remember.
All right. One, two, three...
Sorry, I don't.
Four. In the fifth line, it says, "Mr. Patterson, move to recommend Article 19 as printed." Because there's no article number referenced at all. And then if you go on to two more, Miss English, Braga, motion...
Yeah. Approval as printed.
I think it's Article 21 as printed. And then you moved on to page and...
She's probably just misstating the whole time.
Yeah. It's just yelling.
And then at the down, two lines above five minutes of meetings, none. Miss English Braga should be moved to indefinitely postpone Article 28 as mine conjecture at this point. So, I think...
So, if we can just go through and clarify those...
Yep. Fill in the blanks, so to speak, and I'll be happy to provide.
So, it's all not substantive? So, in which case, we can probably approve it with those corrections? Because it's just really filling in.
Or do you want to see the...
No, no, I don't need to see it. It's just that I think these are important records if anybody ever comes back and questions.
Oh, no, I think, yeah, I think Sue's saying it's important, but that we can still approve them with those clarifications.
If I may, we can work from Selectman Patterson's notes and verify to the video.
That's what I'm saying.
Great. Thank you.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Individual selectmen's reports, given the late hour, I'm just going to quickly say, Barbara Schneider ran an incredible Halloween costume party at the dog park that was very well-attended. And Pat and I were two of the judges. And my favorite was red riding hood doggy with the master wolf. I mean, it was just hysterical how, you know, and these were all mostly volunteers who took care of the park. It's just a super great thing.
I just attended the Route 28 meeting, and it was a packed room with a lot of good comments. Unfortunately, it seems like all the people that are volunteering to be on the committees to look at it are abutters. So, it seems that they'll be precluded from serving on that.
We're going to work, look at that a little closer before we make an announcement on that.
Okay. And then the Little Pond Award for the state funding, that was a great little event, and attended the Housing Production Plan meeting.
Sue Barkley. Sam?
I just, quickly, of course, I attend a lot of meetings, but I just wanted to mention that last week, we had two meetings of the high school field, multipurpose field advisory committee, really looking at how the original RFP was structured. And under advice of our new attorney, we realized that we, that the consultant who put it together did not follow two critical regulations of the state. So, it's going to have to be, so we met again the second time to look at restructuring the whole thing and figuring out a way to divide it into two components. One, where you can have a bid on modulars, like press box, and like concession and bathroom combination. Separate that out and have a more general contractor do the rest, including the multipurpose field. So, we've gone through that. We've gotten the advice of Chris Morag, who's now, is also the attorney serving to support this Senior Center effort.
Right.
Who we have a lot of work, well, we've gotten some critical work done, including helping us out extracting ourselves from the Falmouth High School renovation project. So, with his guidance, we've gone back, looked at all of it. But I think it's still a plan that should fit into phasing with the Senior Center project taking over.
It should not delay the project. This problem should not delay the project.
At this point, it looks like everything could fit together, even though we're going to have to go back out with an RFP. But it should be actually timed in such a way that we should get plenty of competition from various contractors. So, it's looking good. But we did have to take a step back on advice of our attorney and restructure the RFP and put it out again.
Ms. Braga?
Noah, are we going to make any announcement about Senior Center?
Yes.
Okay. Then I have nothing to say. I'll leave that to Peter or to Julian.
Julian?
Yes, I was pleased to attend the groundbreaking ceremony on behalf of the board for the FCTV facility expansion this past Thursday afternoon. And as the boards are aware, we had a fascinating and well-attended public information session on the Main Street reconstruction project. And as Chairman Moran has noted, we'll have a successor meeting next Monday, a week from, oh, yes, yet tonight, a week from tonight, Monday, November 5th at 5:00 PM at the high school, to be followed by the board's regular business meeting at that same location a week hence. And also, I know that Selectmen have received the copy of the warrant articles that have been mailed out to town meeting members in advance of the required deadline, so they'd have some additional time to look that over. And we look forward to that process unfolding with upcoming precinct meetings. That concludes my report.
Great. Oh, we're thinking the same thing.
Yes.
Yeah.
Precinct meeting coverage.
Right. Let's just email that around unless, I'm going to go, I'm going to go to eight and nine, and I'm sure Doug will be at...
I was going to skip eight and nine because there's something else at night.
There's another precinct.
We're going to...
One and two also. I could go to five and six.
I'll be at eight and nine and...
Do we have the schedule?
Three and four. Yes, we do.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Peter, do you want to talk while we're figuring this out?
Sure. Senior Center, we opened the bids last Thursday, and we're very pleasantly surprised by the number of bids. We received eight bids. We were equally pleased that the bids are well within our budget. So, we are carefully performing due diligence because there's a lot to scrutinize before we award the bid to a particular contractor, but are very confident that we will be able to do so within budget.
That's super news. That's huge.
Really good.
Okay. Back to coverage.
So, precinct eight and nine is this Thursday, November 1st. I will be there. It's at the Navigator. It's being held at the Navigator.
Precinct one and two will be here in the solar defense room on Thursday night, also November 1st.
I'll be here for that one also.
I kind of want to attend that solar presentation at the Herman Room, League of Women Voters.
Yeah.
I'm going to do that on Thursday.
Let's see. I'll be at, I guess it's five and six.
That's on Wednesday?
That's on Thursday.
Thursday, November 8.
And I'll also be at four and seven on Wednesday.
So, I will go, I was going to go to...
So, we need someone for three.
I'll do three. What night is that?
November 7th.
Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday. I might be able to go. I have a case on the vineyard if I get back. I had it in my calendar to go. I can, let me just look at this thing. So, or, and I can definitely go to five and six on the 8th.
Okay.
I think that gives us coverage of all of them if we can just get...
I can, I mean, I'll fill in on some of the others as well.
Okay. Okay. So, I think that we're good.
Great.
Move your adjournments.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Pat Thatcher.
And I'm Margaret Gifford, and we're from Sotheby's International Realty.
And you know, Margaret, I think the word that best describes this real estate market this year is opportunistic.
I think that's a great word to describe what the real estate market's doing now.
I think it is also. And that says, if you're a seller, by golly, get your house ready correctly.
And if you're a buyer, do your homework.
So, if you want to be part of this opportunistic real estate market, jump on that horse.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303 or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638 or meganet.net.